Because Wendy is participating remotely, we're going to ask Mark to take a roll call to start the meeting and we'll.
Okay, unmeeting. Carrie Ackerman?
Present.
Cameron McKinnon, here. Mary Hartman?
Here.
Wendy Raveli?
Present.
And Mark Howell, myself. We're all here.
Great, good. Okay, it is 6:01. My name is Mary Hartman, as I just said, calling the September 9, 2024 Select Board Meeting to Order, First Order Business. Are there any public comments that people would like to make? Please come on.
Sit down or stand up?
Sit down, sit down.
Just make sure the green light is on on the microphone.
Thanks, Mark. Good evening. I'm Ray Bradshaw from 1001 Main Street. I have concerns regarding the new trash and recycling program. I know that I'm not the only resident who has reached out to Public Works and has not got a call back after being dumped in voicemail on this issue. So it's my understanding that Waste Management will be loaning us the recycling buckets or trash barrels, I guess the new term is called cart and how, and that there need to be placed at the street at the curb. And there needs to be three feet between each barrel. I have several questions. First of all, while I'm capable of moving a 96-gallon barrel, had done so recently on a military base in DC, what consideration has a town done with getting elderly or people with mobility issues getting those barrels back up and down the street, especially on steep driveways and in bad weather? These barrels are substantially different than those who were doing a trash bag into recycling buckets, where they didn't have to bring anything back up for the bag at all. Second concern, and this is one more of my concern, is is the town planning and changing how they're going to plow to ensure areas in front of residents place these barrels? Once again, I live at 1001 Main Street. Traffic can be bad. Seven years, eight years ago, where I literally had to go out to the street and stop traffic to get out of my driveway because of snow banks. Apparently, from what I'm reading, I can't put the barrels on, or the recycling bins, on the snow pile. So that adds a concern. Likewise, what is the distance behind the barrels that needs to be so they can be picked up? There's comments about cardboard in the stuff I've read. Is the town planning on increasing the amount of pickups of cardboard at Con's Road? I know it gets filled, which is great, but a lot of times it's filled in the two-day pickup types, you know. Is there any reflective material on the barrels to make them more visible for people as they're driving down streets, especially in Main Streets like I am? The website lists additional charges for additional barrels, and I'm not sure how that relates in view of the fact, based on the website, the town will work with Waste Management if one needs to be replaced. So my reading of one part is like, we pay for it once and that's it, it's going to be replaced if need be. And my final point is, I talked to a resident who wanted a smaller recycling barrel, and Public Works told him, no, you gotta get the large one first. We won't give you the smaller one until you take the large one and get it back. I don't understand that. Likewise, my concern again is the size of these barrels for certain things, you know, center of gravity, I think a flip or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from people in the room? Any other comments online? I don't see any hands raised.
I don't see any hands raised.
Okay. So let's move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have anything that they would like to take off of the consent agenda?
I have one small change I want to propose to the meeting minutes. So just on page 13, it's page 13 of the packet, around just where it says, "Discuss Flag Policy Subcommittee Update." And I just wanted to propose simplifying when it says what I-
Where are we, Cameron?
Sorry, it's page 13 of the-
Is it the liaison reports?
It's-
Discuss Flag Policy Subcommittee-
Which is page nine of the minutes.
The actual minute, thank you.
Sorry.
Got it.
Okay. So yeah, I just wanted to, I was going to propose to simplify the sentence to just say, "Mr. McKinnon encouraged discussions around setting consistent standards under option two."
Yeah?
Fine.
So I just wanted to simplify that. That's all.
That's fine. Yeah, I had a few comments on the minutes, too. And these are like mostly on page four of the minutes where the Chair's Report, we're talking about joint Select Board meeting with the School Committee and the FinCom, and it says, "Topics to include capital budgeting and the budgeting process, including the peabody land." If we could insert, "Including the disposition of the peabody land," that would be better. And then on page eight, we're talking, probably midway through the page, Mr. Joslin, at the very last sentence, "Legal counsel also mentioned Mr. Joslin is a family man and wife." So it could be, but in this particular couple, he's a family man and he has a wife.
This is page eight of the-
Yeah, page eight.
I think a lot of them say page eight, so I'm the one I have.
There's two different sets of page numbers.
There's a lot of page eights.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why I got confused. I was trying to refer to what page it was in the packet.
Okay, well, we'll have to check that. But it's page 11 of the packet.
Page 11 of the packet, okay, gotcha.
Did you get those, Andrea?
I did, yes.
And I sent in a change that I can't even remember what it is, but I assume it's in there.
Yes, you and Wendy actually both had edits that I-
Okay, great.
Okay.
And I have one more, Andrea. Under the Chair's Report, where I said, "Municipal Affordable Act, Monday, January 6, 2025, would make this source," and written here as "or" revenue is off the table, and it should be, "This source of revenue is off the table, because we want revenue to stay on the table."
Yes. So did you get all of those?
Right, thank you. Okay, so given those, go ahead.
Given those, I move that we approve the consent agenda and express thanks to Concord Lumber for the gift of tools to the Concord Fire Department, and August 5 meeting minutes as amended during our discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me do a roll call. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. McKinnon?
Aye.
And Ms. Raveli?
Aye.
And myself, I'm an aye. Motion carries.
Okay, Select Board appointments.
Okay. Sure. Move to appoint Ellen Glendon of 64 Stone Root Lane to the Conservation Restriction Stewardship Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2027. Move to appoint Roseanne Shimoney of 10 Dana Road to, as an associate member, to the Agriculture Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2027.
Second.
Any discussion? Nope. Okay, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. McKinnon?
Aye.
Ms. Raveli?
Aye.
And myself, I'm an aye.
Okay, Town Management Report.
Thank you and good evening. There are two weekly reports. One of them is included in the packet. The other was distributed today. I wanted to call out a few items first about mosquito-borne illnesses, and I'm just going to review what was included in the status report, because I think this is important. So Concord Health is in close communication with the Mass Department of Health regarding the presence of West Nile and Triple E in regional mosquito populations. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health announced on Friday, and this was, this was, I believe, Friday, just last Friday, September 6, one additional human case of Triple E and one additional case of West Nile virus in Massachusetts this year. And I did just see this afternoon, there was another Triple E case in Middlesex County noted, and it was, while it didn't say what community, it said it was a community that was high-risk, so not Concord. The DPH raised the risk level to high and actin and moderate in Concord. Concord residents are asked to take precautions and avoid contact with mosquitoes. There's some information about steps that you should be taking, and I wanted to let the board know and the community know that our health director has been staying on top of this, and will be updating advisories as we receive information from the state. I wanted to mention, we have lots of road maintenance work going on and still more planned. There was some information in the report of August 23, 2024. We do have some additional work in the center that is planned for the 16th, and that will be over about a two-week period, and it will include some evening work in order to make sure that we are able to get this work done expeditiously with as minimal impact to the community as you can when you're doing repaving in the center of town. In terms of Giraud Park, we are very close. I feel like I report this every time I talk to you about Giraud Park. We're down to fourth and inches on the pavers. There really is a very small amount of work to be doing on the pavers, drip edges. All of that is supposed to be done this week. In addition, the stone dust paths and the chip seal paths are also supposed to be done this week. I did want to mention that Alan Cathcart, our Public Works Director-
Sorry, on Giraud, did we get to some place on the trees where we were talking about maybe relocating them, or?
Yeah, I'm just, that is the next thing that I'm going to mention. So Alan Cathcart, our Public Works Director, is working with a group of various residents who are representing different groups who have an interest in Giraud Park. So they have been working on what I have been calling a better landscape plan, and they are close to having a better concept. The conversations that he's had with them have also morphed into conversations about benches and some additional site furnishings, particularly picnic tables. And so we think the best course of action here, because I think we're all ready to have coal contracting move on. Coal had some benches as a part of their contract. We're thinking that we will just take a deduct change order for the value of the benches and roll that into this concept that we're working with these, with these new residents. So we're going to take another look at that. What I would like to do, then, is when we have a concept plan, send that over to the Recreation Commission and ask them to solicit public input on that. One of the considerations is, in the Strategic Plan, you might recall, we talked about that fairly recently, one of the things that was identified was having the same type of amenities in parks, so the same types of benches and picnic tables, and so that when you were in a Concord recreation area, you could recognize it. And so we thought, whatever we do at Giraud, it makes sense to have that in keeping with what the Rec Commission would like to see in public spaces. So we're looking, we're looking to do that. And I also wanted to report that last Friday, September 6, we finally received a letter from the Attorney General's Office. It was very brief. It said, "This letter is to inform you that the Office of the Attorney General has closed its investigation into the Giraud Recreation Area Phase 1 Park Improvements Project located in Concord, Mass." And so that was closing it without any findings. I wanted to mention, and I think we did do a late update to the September 6 packet to include some information about the state primary last Tuesday. 25% of eligible voters cast a vote in the state primary on September 3. That was 3,552 voters participating. 74% of them cast their vote prior to Election Day, with 88 following the state-mandated early voting, and the rest mail, vote by mail. So that was interesting. So about 75% or close to three-quarters of people are voting through mail-in. And then one other thing that I wanted to mention, and then I'm going to turn it over to Megan for a quick update on cell service. We did a very large network cutover this past weekend with our in-house IT team. It was successful, but they began at 6:00 AM on Saturday, and they concluded at about dinnertime yesterday.
What's a network cutover?
So let me just tell you a little bit about what they did. So they, they, so they're changing out all of the network equipment as a part of the Infrastructure Upgrade Initiative, which provides more efficient design and will create more resilience and faster speeds. And so they've, they've just changed out a lot of the network hardware. This impacted our entire system, all of, all of the buildings, and they went through simultaneously and troubleshooted in each of our locations. So I just wanted to give a big thank you to our Chief Technology Officer, Jason Bulger, our IT Operations Manager, Amalia McCaffrey, Broadband Manager, Dale Hartling, our Senior Network Engineer, Victor Sensen, and our two IT, excuse me, IS technicians, A.J. Leduke and Eddie Agoras. And then I wanted to turn it over to Megan for a cell update.
Thank you. Good evening. I have a brief cell phone update for you all. We posted a request for proposals for the umbrella earlier this summer, and so that is still live. I wanted to share that I am in regular contact with the Umbrella Executive Director, Eileen Williston, and we have a call every other week to talk about this plan and impact to the building and make sure we're on the same page and communicating regularly. So that has been positive development. We had one site visit with a team from Verizon Wireless the week before last. So the team came out, which was advertised in the, in the request for proposals, that that was an option, to see the space and climb up to the cupola and explore the grounds. So that took place, like I said, at the end of August. And the stage we're at right now is we're accepting questions from those who have requested the RFP, and we have received some questions, and they can come in until the end of this week. And then we have next week to answer all the questions and provide the information that's been requested to all those who had requested the bid documents. So that's where we are at this moment. Proposals are due on this September 27. So I'll have more of an update about proposals that we receive at that time. We also are moving forward with a request for proposals on the landfill. We have drafted the document, we've reviewed it internally and with our consultants, and now we're switching gears to review the document with Town Council and also our internal procurement staff to make sure we are in compliance there. And so that RFP will be available to those who request it on our town website on October 1, and the other, it will be in Goods and Services Bulletin and a few other locations that is required that week. So we look forward to moving forward on that proposal that was overwhelmingly voted at a town meeting this past spring. And next, we haven't forgotten about West Concord. That will be our next area, and we're hoping to move forward on that one once we get a little bit further along in at least one of these request for proposals, to make sure we can focus appropriately on each location. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board for either Carrie or Megan?
No.
I have a question, a few questions, actually. So Megan, if they come back with a proposal, you said September 27 for the umbrella, do you have any idea when you would actually have the, have it installed? Do you have any feel for the timing?
There's a number of factors there. That's when the proposals are due. There's an additional review that we would need to, to do internally before anything is awarded. And then there's a few months after that to prepare for kind of the next steps and plans and that kind of thing. In this request for proposal, we asked applicants to pitch three different locations for ground-mounted material, so that we could review it with the umbrella and have a discussion about location and what makes the most sense for the neighborhood and for, you know, the use of that property. So I think, I don't have a time for you at this point. I think there's some variables.
Do you think it would be in time for the 250th?
Um, I don't know if that would be possible.
Fair enough. I got another question. Carrie, so the trees, the, what are we, transplanting the trees, right? Would that, is that in the budget?
So there is some funding left in that capital project, and there will be some that will be returned as a result of the deduct change order for site furnishings, and we are hopeful that any additional outlay will come from those sources of funding. I neglected to say, we don't expect a new plan to be implemented this fall. It's, it's too quick, because we need to go through a public, a public process.
Great. I got one last question. When you were talking about the mosquito, so at the Ag Committee, Melanie Dennehy, the Health Director, Kim Gorman was talking with Mark and I, the topic of spraying came up, right? I'm assuming that if we were to institute any spraying, there would be a lot of communication around town, so that people would know.
There would be, and I would assume there might be some level of discussion in front of the Board of Health about that.
Right. I remember another year, we went through this, and there was discussion at the Board of Health, and then news and notices, and there's lots of communication.
Good. Okay, great. We're not there yet, but-
Not there.
Yeah, good. Okay, we all set?
Yeah.
Okay, well, we're way ahead of schedule.
I think that's the Chair's Report.
Oh, next is, that would be me. First thing on the Chair's Report would be, on August 28, we got a letter from DCAM, which, as you know, is the state agency, which is, will be tasked with the disposition of the MCI Concord property. This letter was to begin negotiations around the conveyance of the wastewater treatment plant to the town. The thing that we need to remember here is that the town has a serious wastewater capacity issue, and the fact that this was included as part of the potential conveyance to the town was a big benefit to us of the MCI closing. And one of the things that I want to give a shout out to our town manager is that the fact that that was included in the legislation that went in front of our legislature and passed the bill that made this whole thing possible is because of the efforts of Carrie LaFleur. So we really owe her some recognition for, for that. So first step is, they send us a letter. They have some conditions. We've got a lot of work to do. We've got technical work. We've got to figure out what's the capacity of this plant. We have to figure out what is the investment that's needed over the coming years, because the state has a reputation for not always maintaining their treatment plants. So what is the investment that the town would need to make in such a facility? How much real estate underneath it goes with the plant? What are the permitting that comes with this, and could those permits be transferred? So we're relying on, the letter went to the Select Board. We're relying on town staff led by the town manager and Megan Zamudo to work with Alan Cathcart, pull people in from town committees and other town departments as needed to begin the negotiations with DCAM. We are supposed to have a response to them by February 25, 2025. We will, and we expect that we will be given an extension at that time. Oh, okay. Have I pretty much covered that, everything we need to know? Good.
So can we ask a couple of questions about that?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so in the first paragraph of this letter, it says, "Successful, subject to successful negotiation of land disposition agreement, including establishing consideration to be paid by the town, if any."
That's right.
So there may be a cost for this. We don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
Okay, we have no idea.
Right.
Okay. And my other question is number two. It says, "A condition is the DCAM is satisfied that the plan will prioritize and satisfy the needs of," and it lists, you know, three areas that it's currently serving, like the farm, the police barracks. What I'm wondering is, you said that we're still studying what the total capacity is. So I'm wondering, what percentage of the total capacity are these three areas? I expected it to be a low number, like 10%, but I think we need to find out, like in case it's 80% of the capacity or something.
Well, in preliminary, very, again, very preliminary conversations with Alan, and correct me if my numbers are wrong, I think, we think the capacity of that plant right now is permitted at 310,000 gallons per day, and we think that 60 to 80 per day is going to be required by the state, the other state, the barracks and the farm.
And number two here?
60 to 80,000.
Yeah, 60 to 80. Well, that's pretty significant.
Yeah, yeah, it's about 25%.
Yep, that's what I have in my notes, too.
Wow.
300,000 gallons a day.
Yep.
Prison, farm uses 60.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, just the farm?
So, so 20%.
Well, 60 and then 80 if you put in the barracks.
The barracks and-
Yeah, yeah.
It's 60 to 80.
Yeah, gotcha. So there might be more than that, yeah.
Okay, so it's a, it's a real number. Okay, interesting. Thank you. I mean, it's not a teeny-weeny number, but it's not huge.
Well, it was at 60, 60.
Yeah, all right.
That was a teeny-weeny number. So in other words, this is good news, but we also have to be careful to what the condition is, and-
Yep.
A lot, a lot to learn still. I just wanted to, second thing I want to talk about is the FinCom and the Select Board took tours of the DPW, the Public Safety Building, and then we also took a tour of 2229 Main Street recently. The reason that we took the tour of DPW and Public Safety was to get a hands-on feel or an on-the-ground feel for the needs there, and they're acute. These are things that we've neglected for way too long. I'll just give you a quick story of when I went into the Fire Department, and you were all there. In the Fire Department, in order to bring the ladder truck in, they had to cut into the steel beam going across the building. They had to cut into the beam so that the truck would be able to fit into the garage, and then they have to also get custom trucks that have fewer springs, so the truck will sit lower, so that it can fit into the garage. So these are, that to me was just such an eye-opening thing. These are real needs that we've put off for too long. So now our challenge is to find out where in town-
And then they said that that's the last time we can order that truck that size. The next time, we're not going to be able to do that again.
Right, yeah. And that was just fire, and then, of course, we were in police, where you have to, you know, everybody has to leave a room if anybody wants to turn around. Very crowded. Anyway, I could go on. But the point is, these are, you know, in the last few years, our capital improvements have been for the schools, and we've been asking these town employees who provide services to us to wait, and now it's, in my opinion, it's, it's time to pay attention to this seriously. The next thing I want to mention is, we have a, we have a grant for a million dollars for advanced life support that Carrie brought to, brought the news to us a few weeks ago. And at that time, we were going to ask the Fire Chief to come in and give us some financials on what do we get for the grant, what's the revenue, what are the costs, what are we committed to by accepting that grant. The, Chief Judge is going to present at the FinCom meeting on September 26, and you're going to-
Yes.
So instead of coming back here, which is what we wanted, he's going to be talking to FinCom, and Cameron's going to cover that and report back to us. The other thing, we've got two upcoming forums. September 12, DCAM, the first public outreach for the MCI site, and September 30, we will have a forum on the residential tax exemption. And I want to close with the news about the passing of Carrie Flood. Carrie Flood was a lifelong Concord resident, a former- Carrie Flood was a lifelong Concord resident, a former select board member, assistant moderator, had a life of service to the town of Concord. She passed away quickly. She was a wonderful person, helpful. There will be a service this Saturday, I believe, at the D funeral home.
Visiting hours.
There's what?
Visiting hours.
Visiting hours, that's right. Visiting hours are this Saturday at the D funeral home, and then there's going to be a memorial service, the date to be determined. So it's a, she was a remarkable woman.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
One more question back to the wastewater. Trying to get an idea of how big is 310,000 gallons a day, like, does anyone?
Our, our other town facility is 1.2 million.
That was my question. Thank you.
So it's 25%.
Okay.
Okay, let's do liaison reports. Let's do a liaison. Who wants to go first?
I can kick things off.
Great.
I'll give you a report on on a couple of things. So first off would be the light plant. So on Friday, I was able to participate in interviews. So we had the three finalist candidates for the permanent director position. I think that the, the team and and the board did a great job. So we had three highly qualified candidates and really good questions and a really good discussion. We were able to provide the input back to Carrie. I think that she is going to take into consideration in making a decision.
Great.
So so that will be something coming up soon.
This week.
This week.
This week.
Great, good.
Yep, so that was, so that was, that was a really good process that the team ran. The town meeting study committee.
Yep.
So we have a couple of things, just preview of coming attractions. So working on a survey that's going to go out, that we're figuring out how to maybe get a survey out to ask people in the town for some feedback. And also looking at some potential public, like sort of more forums, you know, not, not decision-making things, but just opportunities for the public to hear more about what some of the things are around the town meeting that are being looked at, and opportunity for people to provide, the public to provide some, you know, some input and feedback. So a couple of different avenues there to be continuing to gather information.
Great.
As we look at the the study subcommittee there. And then finally, you'll hear from us, from Wendy and I, on the flag policy later, the flag policy subcommittee. So.
Great.
So that should cover it for me.
Good. The forums, I've got a question about, no, not the forums, the survey, right? How much are you going to rely on the survey to actually guide decisions?
I don't know. I don't know. I would probably defer to the, you know, to the committee on that. We're meeting tomorrow night, so I think tomorrow's the next meeting. It'll be one of the subjects of of discussion.
Okay, who wants to go next?
I'll, I'll go next because it ties in with, I was at the HATS meeting a couple of days ago, Hans Comeria Town Select Board, and several communities in our area, including Lincoln, who's in the HATS, are also doing town meeting studies. Same kind of thing, they have the same questions, clickers, remote participation, et cetera. So it's interesting, these questions are not unique, obviously, to Concord. Also, I've been attending TAC meetings and the 2229 Task Force. Today, I was at a really good meeting with the 250th, and we're going to be hearing from them later. I think they've gotten really organized now. They've got a really good plan, and we'll be hearing more about that. That's really it for mine.
So I did find the tour of 2229 Main Street very informative, and I know all of us, I think, were there. And it was quite the walkthrough. It's, it's impressive. Certainly, the Maximus project oversight, project director is is a confidence inspiring person. It's, on the one hand, I think, amazing that people have the ability to to address issues like this. I think on the other hand, it's, it's quite, you know, jarring to to think about the level of, of, of damage that that was done to our own environment. And I think it, you know, it bears keeping in mind when we, when we look at what we're doing, that that these things can have long impacts into the future. I tried to ask a question about how long the groundwater remediation needed to be in place, and the phrase that's used is the foreseeable future, which effectively means nobody knows how long we're going to have to be paying attention to this, which is, you know, it gives one pause. Also, the, the day before that, and on another note, and another very expensive project, I did, along with members of the school committee and the rest of the building committee, tour the the new middle school building. It's coming along very nicely. It's really beginning to look like a school, some of the, some of the rooms genuinely look like classrooms. I know CMLP was scheduled to cut the building over to permanent electric connection on this past Saturday, and I believe that was done. And that's very important because it allows the the finish work to begin to be done, things that have to require humidity control and that in order to be finished. And so they're working very hard over there. It's a beautiful building. It's, it's quite, it's, you know, it's quite striking. The media center and the, the look out the back is, they were pouring the concrete for the patio that's going to be out there. And it's, it's, it's really going to be a building we can be proud of. So we're looking forward to, it's February opening, and it continues to be on schedule, although, you know, we'll be working hard and that's. The Warner's Pond Task Force is meeting tomorrow night. We've been meeting in various subgroups on the Warner's Pond Task Force over the last couple of weeks. Each subgroup has a specific mission, one to look at the sort of no action, status quo alternative, another to look at dam removal, and the third to look at at a dredging solution and coming each trying to develop, to the extent we can, a proposal for that, which will eventually be evaluated against a criteria that we had previously done. The reason, tomorrow night's meeting should be very interesting. There's going to be a a presentation on fisheries, and because one of the questions that's come up multiple times is, you know, what's the value of having a dam, removing a dam, maybe a fish ladder, those kinds of things on the, on the, the status of the fishery? So an expert is coming in on that. And the dam removal work group is also going to be updating us on, on their progress. And then at later meetings, the work group that I'm specifically leading, which is the the status quo work group and the dredging work group will also be doing presentations. So that's it. I believe there was a location change on that. It was originally posted as Harvey Wheeler, but there's a conflict. So that's going to take place at Kaiser Road and is available online for anyone who's interested in seeing that. The MCI Advisory Board is meeting and preparing again Thursday night here in the, in the townhouse in the select board room here in overflow, or also on, available online. DCAM will have a survey, which is available in a handout format as well as online, for people to express interest and thoughts and concerns. This is very much going to be about the original process. It's the first of several engagement hearings that they're required to have. It had to take place within 45 days of passing, of the passing of the budget. It is not the last. The MCI Advisory Board is also discussed when its next public outreach will be. That will probably take place after that, after that, at the, at the Legal Women Voters' First Friday, which is scheduled now for November 1st. So we're, we're looking to really meet people where they are and where they engage with the community over, over that. There was some discussion for anybody who wants to deep dive a little bit more in the wastewater treatment facility. Alan Cathcart joined, joined us today and talked a bit more about the, the status of the wastewater treatment facility. Probably the one, the other fact that's, that's, that's kind of out there is that Westin Sampson is a contractor, they're examining the condition of the building, and they figure that the capital investment needed to bring that building up to current wastewater treatment standards is around $25 million. So the question of who pays who over the wastewater treatment facility might be, you know, so there's a good reason there's not a number in, in that offer letter. Why don't I leave it there?
Great.
And I guess we have Wendy?
We have Wendy. Wendy?
Mark, can I just have one follow-up question?
Sure.
Remember, for the, for the MCI public forum, is there a fair amount of time for questions and answers by the public? Because I've heard mixed messages.
Yes, there's an hour scheduled for, for public comment. I think that what the public should expect is an opportunity to comment, knowing that the DCAM and the MCI Advisory Board will be paying attention to the comments and trying to understand what people need to know. And so it's going to be an opportunity to come in and have your first say about what might be on your mind, but not necessarily a lot of answers. There's certainly more questions and answers about MCI at this stage of the game. And what we're trying to design in the advisory board is a process that's going to get us all to our, a good understanding of the status of the, of, of the site, of the subcomponents of the site, and what considerations we want to put into the planning process, which is, again, going to take some time, I think, years.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate that. Some people have been asking me about it, so that's great. And I just want to comment on the MCI tour, which, MCI, sorry, the 2229 tour. That was a great presentation by Maximus, a great opportunity to see that property. And I guess the other comment was that we did get a copy of those presentation materials, and I do believe they were supposed to get posted to the 2229 advisory website, so if people are interested in more information, it should be there as well. So that's just FYI. Okay, so in terms of liaison updates, there was one update from the planning board I wanted to share. The Affordable Homes Act, which I think we've mentioned before, was actually signed into law on August 6, 2024, and it went to, and it goes into effect on February 2, 2025. I wanted to share some impact for our ADUs because it does impact ADUs. It's going to make ADUs as of right that are smaller than 900 feet. Currently, our limit is up to 200, is up to 750 feet, and then through an appeal process, we'll approve something up to 1,000 feet. So 900 feet is a significant increase, well, it's an increase in what we have today, and the planning board will look to see whether the appeals process for 1,000 feet needs to even continue. But there were a couple of other things that that impacts as well. The, we can, we're specifically prohibited on having owner occupying requirements. So our current, currently, we have the primary dwelling, or ADU has to be owner occupied, so that is going to need to change in our bylaw. And also, if an ADU is located within a half mile of public transportation, no parking spaces will be required. So a few more things that have to be considered by the planning board for our bylaw improvements, or more to follow on that. The other, there was a brief update by Elizabeth with a meeting on the, with EOHLC from a compliance perspective. They had good discussions, they followed up on some of the GIS questions, and they've followed up a little bit with a single continuous comment. They dug in a little detail with that. There wasn't an immediate answer, but the planning board's continuing to look at and find a solution for that requirement. Elizabeth is going to follow up on that particular, what's unique to Concord is having two unique train stations, and so does that offer us any unique opportunities for negotiation? But they're continuing to consider the comments that were provided by EOHLC and preparing to do the permit filing by the end of the year. And obviously, there'll be more to follow on that. On the school committee, the school committee of this comment is working on their goals for the year, and they will be SMART goals, so they're looking to put metrics to their goals, their focus area is student achievement and success, as you might expect. The second area is communication, and the third is focused on budget-based items. So capital will obviously be a part of that as well. The superintendent is going to be working on, working through the facility study that they received at the end of the spring or early summer last year, and they're going to prioritize those issues and will likely be presenting some items for discussion by the school committee in mid-October. So I'll share that. And that's really it for important liaison updates.
So.
Thanks.
So Wendy, let me ask you a question. So this MBTA compliance, the.
Yeah.
Is, is the planning, I know you said that they're talking about it and about the, the 50% contiguous. Where does that stand exactly? Do they have a game? I mean, are we going to get community input or?
So I did ask specifically the question of, are we reconsidering a significant change? And would we consider looking at the Concord area? And that raised a concern that that might be a very significant change to the current zoning areas that we've set up. And Elizabeth sort of led me to believe that really to achieve that 50% contiguous on our largest area would be a small change in the West Concord area. So I, I think that's the working plan, but more to follow in the next meeting or two.
Okay, I'll be keeping close eye on that.
Yeah.
Thank you. We, I just want to remind everyone that when we very first started that process, a lot of the feedback we heard was that we didn't want West Concord having more than their fair share. So if we're thinking of doing something easy, I think that would be kind of going back on what we heard from the community. I wanted to say that publicly.
No, not necessarily, because there's two areas in West Concord, and if they.
Yeah, but the, the 34% one, it would still mean that most of it's carried from West Concord. If they make the, if they.
They can move some from the other West Concord area into that one.
But we're going to need more acreage, right?
I don't know. Let's wait and see what happens.
Yeah, I mean, it, it seemed like there might be a close solution that would, that would work. But I did, Mary, talk about Concord versus West Concord, and would the depot be considered? And I got the sense that the answer would be no, because to the point of the West, there was Concord, concern about West Concord, a year or so ago, there was a big concern over changes in the depot area in Concord also. I'm just sharing the feedback because we wanted to make sure that we had that raised.
That's all. Okay. Okay, I've got two quick.
One more.
Thank, thank you, Wendy. And thank you for joining us tonight. I know you're away. I've got two quick liaison reports. One is, we are continuing to work on the, developing a program for pilots, which is one of the select board's goals. So Lois Wasoff from FinCom, Carrie LaFleur, and Anthony Ansaldi and myself have met, we met with Steve Cirillo, who's an expert on pilot agreements. He gave us a great tutorial on how to start. Lois has gone off and developing a policy that we will bring back to the select board. So we're going to start with a policy, then we'll move to what's the process, and then we will have a list of people to, to contact. So we're in the process of developing a policy. We hope to bring it back to the select board sometime November, November, December, something like that. Okay. Last thing, the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust voted to award a million dollars from their fund to the Concord Housing Development Corp. to build three units at Assabett Boff. Hopefully, they'll break ground this fall. That will bring five units at that property onto the affordable housing inventory. As history, you'll remember that that deal was, the only reason we were able to do that deal is because there was a lot of open space included in that, and the open space people stepped up. My, my personal opinion is that we're spending, after all a sudden, down about 2.5 million dollars for five affordable units. That's an awful lot to spend per unit. I am the, I am the vice chair of this Affordable Housing Trust, so I'll be working to hopefully bring the price per unit down as we move forward.
Excellent.
Okay.
So I had one, just, Carrie, maybe you know this. When is the next opportunity for the public to hear more about 2229 Main Street, like in a forum kind of setting?
Okay, right.
Do they have somebody scheduled that?
So obviously, all the meetings are open meeting. They meet every two weeks or every three weeks, but they're scheduled to come in before the select board. I believe the end of October, their report is due.
Okay.
And at that point, they're going to, you know, go through in detail. And then after that, the select board will have to decide what the next steps are going to be. And there are. And there might be a public forum right after the Select Board meeting to see maybe what we should do next. If you have any specific suggestion of what you want, please let us know, because they're getting close now. They're starting to put the recommendations together and write the report.
Yeah, I thought there was something coming up. I just thought, since we've been talking about seeing it, we ought to share when people are next likely to get an update about the progress.
Right. Well, that was the whole point, to be able to see it. So now, when they come in with the report, when they talk about Area A and Building E and all this, you're going to know what they're talking about.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Diane, yeah, I see you have your hand up. Diane, do you want to ask a question, make a comment?
I thank you. I just wanted to say that the League on the 25th of September, from 2 until 4, will be hosting an opportunity for various town committees to present the work over the summer and the work that they're doing this, looking forward to, and one of them is 2229 Main Street. So I think that will be a wonderful opportunity for people to hear what's been happening there.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, time to open a public hearing.
Okay. Move to open the public hearing for a grant of location request for Gas Main from National Grid, 42 to 138 Crescent Road.
Second.
We'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. McCallum?
Aye, but I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay. And Ms. Raveli?
Wendy?
Aye, sorry.
And myself, I'm an aye. Okay, do you want to state...
I'm going to step out. I think I'll just, it's best to step out, so if somebody can come...
Good to state a reason.
But I just, I have a conflict with National Grid, because I work for National Grid, so...
Right, just for the record.
Yeah, so for the record, I am recusing myself, and will, if someone can come, just let me know when it's done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and the presenter on that is online, is she here?
She is.
Yes, good evening.
Good. Please proceed.
Eric, can we see your face?
It's my, it's not working. I'm sorry. National Grid respectfully requests your consent to agree to grant a location where National Grid wishes to relay approximately 805 feet of 2-inch coated steel dating back to the 1930s, approximately 150 feet of 2-inch plastic from 2013, with approximately 955 feet of 2-inch plastic in Crescent Road from the existing 2-inch coated steel at number 42 Crescent Road, to 2-inch plastic at the end of Main at 138 Crescent Road. Like also to relay approximately 735 feet of 2-inch coated steel dating back to the 1930s, with approximately 735 feet of 2-inch plastic in Hosmer Road and Neshoba Road to the existing 2-inch coated steel in Crescent Road. And to relay approximately 710 feet of 2-inch coated steel dating back to the 1930s, with approximately 710 feet of 2-inch plastic in Garland Road from Crescent Road to the existing 2-inch coated steel in Neshoba Road. To relay approximately 465 feet of 2-inch coated steel dating back to 1957, with approximately 465 feet of 2-inch plastic in Wilson Road from Neshoba Road to the end of Main at number 59 Wilson Road. And to relay approximately 860 feet of 2-inch coated steel dating back to the 1957, with approximately 860 feet of 2-inch plastic in Neshoba Road from Hosmer Road to the end of Main at 321 Neshoba Road. And to relay approximately 480 feet of 2-inch coated steel dating back to the 1930s, with approximately 480 feet of 2-inch plastic in Neshoba Road from Garland Road to the existing 2-inch coated steel at 144 Neshoba Road.
And I would just note for the record that there's a memo included in our packet, starting on page 47, with this, a set of specifications from the Concord Public Works Engineering Division, laying out some conditions that the CPW asks that we approve with this petition. And Mary, have you had a chance to review these conditions, and do you have any concerns with them?
No, these conditions were reviewed by the project managers, and there's no issues with them.
Okay. Do we have anybody from Public Works that wants to say anything about this?
So Town Engineer Steve Ducren is here.
Thank you.
Yes, Steve Ducren. No, we, the thorough review of the project, it's a pretty large project, and we give a two-year timer to complete the project. Should they not get it done by that timeframe, we ask that they come back to renew the petition, because things could change out there, and we'd like to take an opportunity to see that all of our conditions still apply.
I have one question, Stephen. Where do these particular roads stand on our road replacement program? Like, what's their condition and the age of the areas?
These roads are in pretty good condition, and one of the conditions you would see for the approval is that they do a curb-to-curb or edge-to-edge pavement restoration, see that they will be disturbing good pavement.
Okay.
So it's the full street, not just half the street where they're digging?
Right, it's the full width of the street.
Okay, let's check.
Okay, great.
And the point of this is to replace old pipe, or is it also increasing capacity?
They are replacing the same, the pipe with the same size, so it's no increase in capacity.
Thank you.
So the purpose of the project is, the old infrastructure is too old and decaying?
I could have Mary answer that, but typically, this is a leak, leak pipe replacement.
Okay.
Yeah, it gets to the point where they no longer can repair the leaks, and they want to replace the pipe.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? You want to come up?
Good evening, Board. My name's Paul Duffy from One Way Crescent. I can attest to the pipe leak, because 42 Crescent did have a strong gas leak smell, probably for a year or more, 42. So I'm glad that was acknowledged. I do have a few questions. I have not read the DPW's report. I wasn't aware that was available. I'll give that a look.
Sure.
But what I think I just heard is a two-year window on this project. I may ask some silly questions here, Mary, so bear with me. I'm assuming that doesn't mean there are going to be trenches in the ground for two years. If that's not the case, appreciate knowing that. For each, there's six, what does the term relay mean? Does relay mean replace?
Yes.
Okay, so we're replacing six sections of the pipe over a two-year project period. Ground's going to be dug up. One of the questions they had, I think, Mark, you answered that about the repaving issues, that's taken care of. My question as a resident on the street is service disruption, impact on gas appliances in the home, and not to be over alarmist about this, but we all, Columbia Gas situation wasn't that long ago. Human error, pipes being overpressurized, regulators being blown through, appliances damaged, houses, you know, getting significant damage. So what, what can National Grid or DPW tell us tonight, or should I go look at another source later regarding safety precautions, service outages, what have you?
Well, National Grid would, there should be no service interruption unless it is specifically told to you within, you know, a few days' notice or a week's notice. And if you can't agree to that, then they will reschedule you to something that would suit you. National Grid is trained, they're experts in the field, and they do this every day.
I'll take your word for that. Again, I'm thinking Columbia Gas, people make mistakes. What I'm wondering is, will service be physically shut off at the entry point to the homes? I guess I can get that detail later. So I'm also, potentially another silly question, I'm assuming any service interruption is not going to happen in the wintertime?
No, the permit, after the grant of location is, if it is approved, it allows National Grid to apply for the permit, and we have to fall under the strict guidance of the Concord DPW. They lay out all the groundwork, and we have to follow what they say. That's what we do. We're in contact with them constantly.
Okay. I think that answered my questions. I'll read the DPW report, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mary, it's, I have a question, because I want to make sure it was clear. I know that this permits, that the authorization will be for two years, but how long do you expect the project to last during construction?
Well, if they started, if they, I'm assuming there would be no delay, so this is, like Mr. Ducren said, it's a very, it's a good-sized project. So if they, if maybe weather permitting, they were allowed to start in February, I could see the project probably wrapping up in the summer sometime.
Okay, it's not a full two years, but, okay, probably a good sequence. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anybody online? I don't see any. Move to close the public hearing for the grant of location to approve the request for gas main replacement from 42 to 138 Crescent Road with conditions outlined in the packet.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Ackerman?
This is a vote?
Yes, a vote.
Okay, aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Ms. Raveli?
Aye.
And myself, I'm an aye. That would close the hearing. So we can have a discussion at this point about whether or not we would approve this grant of location. Any further questions, discussion about that?
No, the memo was very clear and very thorough.
Okay, and so I'll make a...
Approve the grant of location request for the gas main at 42 to 138 Crescent Road.
And second, and Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Ms. Raveli?
Aye.
And myself, I'm an aye. Thank you.
You getting Cameron?
Yep.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I'm glad you asked that question, Mark, that they, had they read the conditions, are going to...
Yeah.
That makes a big difference. It's great.
I did try to confirm that we had gotten them out there.
Yep.
Okay, so we're continuing the discussion on the intermunicipal agreement for the opioid settlement. Is Kelly Calo with us?
Yes, I was wondering, Mary, if you wouldn't mind if I just introduced her.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to introduce Kelly Calo, who is the Shared Services Coordinator for the Great Meadows Collaborative. She's with us online tonight. The presentation that you saw at the last meeting by the Health Director, Melanie Deneen, went over this proposal, but due to an oversight on my part, you didn't have the agreement in front of you, so this is, this is the second time you're hearing about the same program. And I just, I wanted to share that this is a really exciting opportunity for communities that are already partnering together to further regional health, regional public health goals, to pool together their resources to make a larger impact with the opioid funds. This agreement has been reviewed, and I believe signed by the other communities in the partnership. And it's also been, it's also been reviewed by town council, and we also share town council with a few of these communities, so just to have a, set the stage here. And we do have Kelly Calo online, if you have any additional questions about the agreement.
Kelly, why don't you just say a few things, introduce yourself to us?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for having me tonight. I wish I was there in person, but unfortunately, I had some personal circumstances that came up that inhibited me from doing so, but I'd like to just give a really great introduction to what we're going to discuss tonight. I'm here for any questions. Melanie, I think gave you a very good PowerPoint that kind of went over the program. The Great Meadows Public Health Collaborative includes seven different municipalities, which is Bedford, Concord, Carlisle, Lincoln, Sudbury, Weston, and Wayland. And we are pulling together to do a lot of different public health initiatives, and this is one that we're super excited about, to hire a regional substance youth prevention coordinator to be on the grounds and in the communities to do some substance youth prevention work, which has probably been done in your communities, but not in a very formal way. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have. The other six municipalities have voted to have their town managers sign this IMA, so we're just waiting on Concord, and hopefully, through this meeting tonight, we'll be able to get that authorization, so we can move that position forward.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board?
I thought we had a good discussion last time, and we were just waiting to see the actual agreement, so I'm all set.
Yep.
I think regionalization is a great idea, especially for this.
Definitely.
So thank you.
Yep. Definitely agreed.
Okay, do we have a motion to...
Yep. Move to approve the intermunicipal agreement for the opioid settlement.
Second, anybody, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Raveli?
Aye.
And myself, I'm an aye. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for being here.
Okay, moving on to the updated Concord Center, no, Concord Cultural Council charge. I'll get these words right someday. Lot of words. Hi, Mimi.
Hello. So folks might recall, Concord has got two cultural districts, West Concord and Concord Center, and there was a task force tasked with looking for a new permanent home, instead of having lots of separate standalone committees, to find a new home for their work, which is to oversee the Concord Center District, which is sort of a place-making initiative by the Mass Cultural Council. That group recommended that it be put under the umbrella of the local cultural council. So that's another group that's administering a different Mass Cultural Council program, that's the small grants that go to individual artists. So we're combining those two charges into one. So Mary and I had a meeting with representatives of Mass Cultural Council to make sure that it passed muster, and they looked at it more closely to make sure it complied, and they showed that it did. The local group, the local cultural council met and are sort of getting up to speed to what the new tasks will be, but are on board with their new requirements.
Great, you answered all my questions. Anybody have any other questions?
No.
Mary, I had one.
Go ahead.
In the chart, the range of the number of members was quite large, from five to 12, and usually, we have a narrower, more well-defined count of members. And I'm just curious on why we didn't narrow that down to a, like, 10 or something like that?
Well, I think that...
It messes up some of the quorum requirements, too, right? If you don't know exactly how many members are on the committee.
I think it's based on how many people are actually seated. The two programs have got, the Mass Cultural Council has requirements for representation on those two groups.
Right.
So it might be a little tricky to, like, make sure we have enough representation of our wanting folks that are running actual organizations, working artists, businesses, folks who are in the district, folks that can represent townwide. So I think we want a little bit of flexibility. I'm also hoping to kind of lean more a little bit onto the economic vitality angle that the group is supposed to be doing. So we wanted a little bit of flexibility in terms of the membership. So we wanted a little bit of flexibility in terms of the membership. And I think there's some folks that really like one part of the charge or the other. So I think the local cultural council, I think only met maybe four or five times a year. So this is going to be a big growth. So I think we wanted to be able to bring some new folks to supplement that effort.
Good. Okay, just a big range, that's all.
So right now, the cultural council is taking applications for this year's cycle. When, if we vote tonight, when would this new change take effect? Will it take effect immediately?
Yeah.
Okay, because they're right, they're right in the middle of accepting grants for this year. So we would start appointing new people? Or how is this going to work?
So the deadline for that grant program, the deadline's in October. They generally don't start reviewing them. There's a process of making sure they've got, are complete. So I think they don't actually start reviewing them until November and finalizing them in December. In actuality, almost everybody who applies gets funding, so it's not a super competitive program. And they're pretty small grants. So potentially like new members could come on board and then just maybe not take part in that review and kind of get up to speed on the district side of the work.
So do we have people already? Are the existing members of the Concord Cultural? I'm sorry, what's?
Local cultural.
The local, are they automatically becoming members of the, of the new Concord Cultural Council?
That's my understanding, that it's sort of a new name, an old committee with a bigger charge and a new name.
But do we have additional people who are waiting to come on, who have applied?
We haven't, because the committee hasn't been, they don't have a new charge, so we haven't started recruiting new members. There's a couple of people I think would do well on it, but nobody's been approached.
Well, one way to do it might be to approve it tonight and then start recruiting people. Because by the time they fill out the cards and then we have to do the nomination process and we do the approval and that their new, the new people would start something like January 1st or, you know, right after the cycle. To have them come in the middle of the cycle could be disruptive. And I don't know if we could get them on board by October. I'm not sure we could make that.
Do we have a liaison to this group?
Okay, so what do you think?
Workload.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you think, Mary?
Yeah, I do a lot of work.
Yeah, you do.
The work of the cultural district is still kind of the stuff that the task force, the previous group kind of teed up. We'll be wrapping up the end of December. And their new grant comes in in January, so that would make sense for the new people to come on then.
Does that work for you, Mary?
Sure.
Okay, all right. I had a really good conversation with Mimi about the concerns I had about the two different missions that we're putting together. So I think I'm still not 100% there, but I'm certainly willing to give it a try. You've put in some good wording on that.
Are there any questions from the public in the room, online, any comments? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the updated Concord Cultural Council charge.
Second.
Yep, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Ravelli?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well.
Thank you. Okay, so stay there.
Okay, I'm going to have time.
This is the discussion on about the-
You were back much sooner than I thought.
250th Wayfinding.
Me too. Die climber, 13 River Street. And I am back with the wayfaring sign. We have met with the HDC and got approval. And also had a chance to meet with the DPW to get approval about the construction and the installation of the sign. So we're eager to move forward. Want to show them the slides or we need to?
Yeah, so the last page has got the actual design. So Steve Brumondo has been incredibly amenable with all the different edits and tweaks. As we found, like tiny little typos of apostrophes that shouldn't be in there. And so this is the final design that we're wanting to move forward with.
I really like this design. I think it's very attractive and informative.
So Concord, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's something that Beth Williams has yearned to have. Because they have a black and white little, small sign inside the building that shows people where things are. You have to look closely and it's right behind the door and very crowded. But it's been incredibly useful to people to get an idea of where things are.
This is very eye-catching.
So when will it be, when will it be up, do you think?
Well, I think we're pretty ready to go. Depends on Bill Crosby's schedule to get it, you know, get it made.
Yep.
The process is simple in terms of now that the illustration is done, it can be printed on the, well, it's printed on a sheet of, what is it?
Was it a kid?
Yeah, it was, it's on a graphite. And then it's laminated. And then it's mounted on a 1/8 inch aluminum piece, which is a die-bond, called die-bond. So it's, the whole thing is very thin and weatherproof. So that should be easy to do once the structure is made. So I, it will be done definitely in time before the ground freezes.
Great.
That's awesome.
Good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Okay. Move to approve the 250th Wayfinding signage.
Second, and thank you both for your work on this.
Any further discussion, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Ravelli?
Aye.
And myself, I'm an aye. I am an aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's great the way it captures what these buildings actually look like.
Yeah, yeah, I love that sign.
Yeah, we are, two minutes behind. Rob will catch us up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to be back again.
Yes.
Gary Clayton, 31 Blackburn Lane.
Rob Monroe, 1400 Lowell Road.
We are co-chairs for the Concord 250 Committee. And let me add my thanks to the Select Board's approval of the previous immediate, a previous agenda item, which was a Concord 250th initiative. Do you want to highlight that? And I believe the map indicates and shows has the Concord 250 logo, so. So we, Rob and I put together a package of material, including a budget summary. We've submitted that to you, you received it in your package. And I think what I might do, if it's all right, just briefly mention relative to the budget summary itself, it does reflect some changes based on feedback from this board from our last meeting. And so it includes funds that have been committed, funds to be spent, others that have been expended, et cetera. It's one of the distinctions we wanted to make. We've also added some further clarification relative to what we're referring to as special projects. And so as we look to raise funds for various and many initiatives as part of Concord 250, that includes, at this point, and it's reflected in this budget summary report, the funds that Mimi has left, but I want to give, oh, she's right here, oh, good. So I can give her full credit for, and work with the other town staff in soliciting the funds from the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism. Those are for the age-friendly benches that will be installed. And since that is really part of our 250 initiative as well, let's identify, credit it as such. So it's here, we've added that to the budget summary as well. It's a wonderful example of working with the town staff. They've been very supportive in a lot of different respects, and this is one example of that. Combined efforts results in some very nice outcomes.
So can I just, so I, thank you, I did review the, the expense line items. I was just curious where the, aren't we proposing like a memorial? Is that in, is that in one of these?
It's, it is, Cameron, under, the expense is under Memorial Trees.
Under trees, but, but-
There's, so there's three, there's actually three parts to our vision for a permanent memorial. So it's, I guess it's permanent memorials plural. One, the commemorative or memorial trees, the 250 trees. A second is actually further developing, expanding upon and conducting essentially historical research on Concord residents who are veterans of military conflicts, beginning with the American Revolution through at least World War II. So we have done through our History and Education Subcommittee some really interesting work relative to now identifying for the first time those individuals who served Concord's behalf during the American Revolution. When I engaged in this interesting journey regarding Concord 250, I thought that was settled business from centuries ago. That is not the case. So the research, historical research that's been done is illuminating. And it includes now those individuals who, again, who served on Concord's behalf and whose military service led to their death. And we've never been able to identify that until now. So that's the second part of our-
But that's just research, that's-
That's historical research, but not just, but it's, but it's research.
I don't mean, I don't mean, but it's not a, it's not a memorial.
Yeah, it's, we're, we, from the outset, we've deliberately used the term and interpreted the term memorial broadly. So, because some folks actually had the same response when we came forward with the idea of commemorative trees, that that's not a memorial. And I respectfully beg to differ, that there are different ways in which to commemorate what 250 represents. So that's, it's been part of the process that's unfolded. And so the third part is our efforts looking at, at this point, the site right here at Monument Square, that might be and could be, we think, the locus of a memorial, which would have some fixed elements associated with it, some re-landscaping, et cetera, that would make the site, we believe, much more useful, interesting, and use it as an opportunity to interpret more about the 250th anniversary, and particularly looking at those individuals whose voices haven't always been necessarily heard. And an example of what is unfolding in that regard, again, thanks to Mimi and some of her colleagues within town government, this fall will be installing a temporary art installation in that space. And with it, there's going to be a series of public activation events, music, poetry, et cetera, that will unfold over the fall and early winter months. And that's, that's a vision of how, in the committee's mind, that space might be used. So that's a long answer to your question.
So that, so that's a temporary installation?
That is temporary at this point in time, right.
Is there also a proposal for a permanent?
We are working on that. And we have a conceptual design, but it's still, and I emphasize, still conceptual in mind. And it clearly has much more work and public review and discussion to unfold until we have a, what we hope is a design that we would be anxious to move forward with and which would need to come back to this board, since that is public lands. Possible public lands.
And then would it also go through anything with the Historic Commission or the Historic District Commission?
If there's a structure or facility associated with it, then that would require Historic District's Commission review and approval of that.
So is-
And we've not made, we have not yet made application to them for that.
So is it, is it your understanding that whatever's being proposed is something that would likely trigger going through the Historic?
Yes. I mean, at this point, in terms of the conceptual design that we-
Yeah, I'm saying if you looked at the conceptual design, it would sort of qualify as something that would go to the Historic District first and then come to the Select Board. Okay.
Correct.
Cool. So that, that's very helpful. I would suggest maybe we either relabel the term memorial trees, because that sounds like it's- It maybe has some other categories of stuff in it that's, that's not just trees. So thank you for that.
Okay, yeah, so noted. Thank you, we can do that.
And it's true that the funding for that permanent memorial is not part of this budget at this time.
That is correct.
Okay, just clarifying.
So, so the 275 that we're looking at is for the trees?
That is for the trees. It represents the monies that were appropriated in part by the last town meeting through the Community Preservation Fund.
I'm glad to hear that you would also have a lot of public forums besides coming to the Select Board and the HDC.
Yeah.
Because I'm hearing a lot of comments. This has generated a lot of interest.
It has, yes. And we've had several public forums to date, but there's clearly more in our future in that regard.
And I want to add that now the 250 Executive Committee meetings are on Zoom. And everybody can watch them from home or show up at the library. So public input can be gotten that way.
Good.
I have a few questions.
Well, sorry, I just had one more question on that subject. Because now you mentioned that it's not anything that we would build, was not budgeted. Where would the money come from if we were going to build something?
Has to be fundraised for, at this point.
Cool, thanks.
And there may be other sources, but that's-
No, that's fine, that's fine. Sorry, I, Mary, I turn it over to you.
Anybody else have any? Okay, I've got a few questions for you. First of all, the drone event on April 19th, that sounds really exciting. I'd like to know more about that and, and how you expect to fund it. Because I don't think that's in here either. Is it?
It actually, it is.
Oh, good.
Yeah, under Programs and Events.
Okay.
Events and Programs is listed here. It's at the moment incorporated in the budget. Rob, do you want to speak briefly to that and then I can add something?
Yeah, so this was, this drone event is replacing the formerly planned music festival event that we had thought about. We decided not to go that way. Instead, do a drone event. We've asked Joe Palumbo and CJ to work this month to iron out more details, meet with the appropriate town staff, public safety, to make sure it will work. I think many of the logistics will stay the same in terms of location. We're looking at, I think Chris had mentioned something like 400 drones or 400 to 500 drones. We'll try to maximize our drones so that a lot of folks can see it. It would be about a 15-minute show. And we will have, we'll certainly have more details of that in October when we come back to you guys. But I think moving away from the music festival, which logistically was not really tenable to something that we can put together, we can build around it so that people can still be in town and enjoy the celebrations of that day and then gather together either right downtown or in the neighboring area where they can still see the drones to experience that.
I saw that you had a letter in here to Senator Barrett asking to put the 325 back in the Senate version of the supplemental budget. Do you have an update on whether you're successful in getting that?
I really wish we did. So that, that would be, that would go through the Economic Development Bill that has been talked about for quite some time. But with them coming back in session for the fall, we're hoping that we'll have more updates on that in the fall. And that would be incredibly helpful for us on the IMA planning side to help support transportation and other programming across the Bottom Row towns.
Well, I'm glad you brought up the IMA, because I saw the, all the papers there with Anthem. Now Anthem is the company that we hired with the IMA.
Through the IMA, that's correct.
Okay, so when I read, I'll just give you my impression. I read those papers. They did a lot of work. I don't see a lot of deliverables. So are you happy with the deliverables that you're getting from them for the money that we've spent?
We've been happy with their work in, in recognizing how many different entities they've had to meet with over the last six months to put all this together.
But what have they put together? I guess that's where I'm going.
So they've, their biggest product right now has been to help Mima put together the master calendar for all four towns plus Minuteman National Historic Park. That was, that was the big deliverable that they worked on. And it's taken this long to get done. The next major deliverable, which they should have- The next major deliverable, which they should have for us very soon, is a list of all assets across the four towns so that we know what assets we need to procure for the weekend of April 19th. And I think I want to balance our collective, you know, frustration with them giving us deliverables with the very real fact that it's taken those of us who work through our different towns a very long time to get them the information they need to develop those deliverables. And so I think we're, we meet with them a week and a half from now and are expecting a more formalized marketing plan, a better plan for assets.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, so that, so I think we're, we're at the moment where they're, we're done with meetings. They've met with the right people.
That's what I was hoping.
They do that, and now it's starting to move forward with actual tangible products.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I have. Anybody else have any questions?
I just want to comment this morning, there was an excellent meeting that Gary and Rob hosted where, to your question, Mary, this, where it says Events and Programs for the 130,000.
Yeah.
They went through in great detail of breaking down all the different possible programs and really putting the budget together. It was an excellent meeting. So I just felt today that things were really starting to come together.
Thanks, Terry.
More organized and more collaboration, more communication. It was, things are really coming together.
Good.
We're, we're at the point now where, you know, for the last, I'd say, year and a half, we've solicited ideas and proposals from every nonprofit in Concord and every player, and we really use today to be that, it sounds bad, but to close the door on those, those ideas. Now, now we have to have that list of events and programs. We have to make sure that they can be funded in collaboration with other groups or through our budget, and then we can move forward with the planning part of it, so.
Right, and the new member that we've appointed, Chris.
Chris Johnson.
Right, he was tracking all of it on various spreadsheets, and we were having all sorts of funds, use of funds. It was really starting to come together.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot coming together, and I, there's now more and more program activity and events that are unfolding, as we saw this past weekend, and that will be, that pace is going to quicken, which is good. It's a good thing that that's happening. As Rob said, we very much want to, again, there's been a lot of interesting ideas, a lot of aspirations, and I appreciate the town staff's patience in working with us. But we are bringing that and crystallizing that so we can now pay attention to what we describe as the big show, which is April 19th. And this work is really important. It's going to add lots of opportunities for engagement and, I hope, excitement and fun for members of our community and beyond. But we, as an executive committee, now increasingly will have to be focused on the, the big show. And this has to be settled, and it will be. We're very clear, by the end of this month, it will have crystallized. And that'll be reflected in your next report.
So is there a sense of a fundraising goal and a tracking of that that we should be aware of in terms of what's come in? I noticed that there's pretty modest amounts listed in the, in the budget.
Yeah.
At this stage, but what should we be aiming at?
That's a good question to ask us again next month. Because part of our efforts to define the various programs and events gives us a chance to say, here's what we have a budget to be able to support, sustain. But our aspirations, not surprisingly, extend way beyond that. And that may be, I think, what defines what our fundraising goal may be in that regard. But as I said, I think we're, there's still, we made a lot of progress today, we've still got a little bit more work to do to try, as I say, bring closure to that by the end of the month, and then, then we can respond more to your question, I think, Mark, in terms of this is what the fundraising effort might be. And there's, you know, there's a lot of ideas floating around of what that might be, but I think what we did today and what we have to finish up this month relative to defining the programs is going to be the basis for defining what is the nature of a fundraising campaign going to entail.
We also had to slow down the kind of the formation of the fundraising committee. We had a change in leadership with the treasurer, and Chris Johnson stepped in very quickly to help us out, but had to learn quite a bit.
Okay.
Thank you to Shannon and Gary for helping that. So I wouldn't say that set us back, but it, it's actually going to end up being very helpful in the long run, but meant that those conversations had to stop for a little bit.
So how's it going as far as meshing the events that you're going to do and the events that will be funded by the corporation?
So I submitted several proposals on behalf of the executive committee, six proposals. Three of them have been acted on or, and I expect will be funded or fully funded in terms of our request. A couple of the others, which were requesting larger sums of money, that they've decided at this point, no action. So the engagement with the corporation will continue. The trustees will meet again later this week, and we'll continue on a monthly basis here going forward, and we'll have a clearer sense as those conversations move forward, what the funds that are made available to the corporation and how they're being dispersed.
Okay, so you're talking, but that's good. But what about the events? Are you making sure that any events that the corporation is planning won't somehow interfere with events that you're planning? Because I know you're, you're having a calendar developed, right? Is any events that they're planning going to be included in that calendar?
As of right now, that's not part of the conversation. And I think as they solidify whatever events they're, they're planning, Patriots' Ball, whatever.
Patriots' Ball is.
I, I think that's probably the biggest event. My hope is that they're, they communicate with us in good faith as we continue to communicate with them so that we can.
Yeah.
So that we can.
To them.
That's right, exactly. We don't have any control over any of that.
So I would, so this is great. I'm glad that we're doing this. I'm glad that we're getting these monthly updates, so thank you, first of all. I think it's, I think it would be great as much as you can, if you've gotten, if you're getting money from them for, just to sort of list, hey, here's the other events that we've gotten funding for, just so we have visibility, right? So just as best as we can provide that visibility. And then my last thing is just, I want to make sure that we're aligned from a town perspective, because I see things in the budget here like 625 from ARPA, 350 from Free Cash, 60 from the budget going into the parade. That's all lined up with what we have. No, everybody's like, yep, we've seen that, it's good. Okay, great, awesome, thank you.
A piece, yes, that has come together again. Many thanks to the staff, town manager's office, CFO, et cetera.
Awesome.
And, and, and one of the changes we made, Cameron, to the budget report and funding sources have added under Other, include Concord 250 Corporation. So, and those funds have been approved at this point for a high school essay competition that we have been sponsoring, and the funds for that were designated by a donor who made a donation to the corporation, but they wanted the money used for that purpose. Good, okay, we've done that. But there are two others that are in the works, and I'm expecting by Thursday that they will, the corporation will sign up on those as well. So yes, we will continue to keep this board apprised of that information as best we can as, as it becomes available to us.
Great, good.
Thank you.
So there's no vote or anything?
No votes.
Thank you.
No, no votes.
Thank you again. We'll see you in December, I guess.
In.
No.
October.
Oh, yeah, we said monthly. I'm sorry.
They say monthly. They say monthly.
Don't want us back that quickly.
December's okay too.
Well, you're doing such a good job, maybe.
Actually, it's actually, it's, it's great for us to be able to come back.
Good, good.
Yeah, I think it is good, yes. Okay.
Thank you, friends.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just sit here for a minute, because I know you're going to do one more Island 250 business.
Oh, right, that's right, we are.
So just for the listening audience, the next item is another matter of Concord 250 activity.
So the next thing is the no-fly letter. The letters in the packet were kind of reversed, so we're going to go, let's do the no-fly letter first since Gary's here.
Okay.
Right. Okay, so that's the second letter here, dated September 10th. It's a pretty short letter, and I was asked by the Parade Subcommittee that we just asked for it in the north half of town. We don't need a no-fly area in West Concord, for example. So it's from Route 2 to Middlesex School on April 19th, between 9:00 AM and 12:00, when the parade and the North Bridge ceremony are going on. And the two exceptions are if the president or vice president is arriving at Hanscom, or, and/or there might be a military flyover as part of the ceremony. So it's a pretty short letter, it's got a zillion CCs. We've actually been in contact with a lot of these people. For example, Simone is a big supporter of having the no-fly zone. So Gary, I think I missed that meeting, but your committee approved this?
Yeah, at a earlier meeting, we did review this. Terry proposed, prepared the letter, we reviewed it and voted unanimously to recommend to the Select Board that you adopt this and send it off to the FAA. And I might note, I think, at least the version of the letter I received, in terms of the executive director of Hanscom Field.
Oh, right.
There's a name missing.
Right, and now I'm looking at a version that does have the name Sharon Williams, so.
Just may I just put the copy?
Yeah, yeah, it depends which version you're, do you have that, Andrea?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out. And the only other thing was, I thought whether you might want to include our state representatives and state senator on the CC list.
Yes, they are on there. Maybe you have an old version there.
That's good.
They're good.
Yeah, they're, they're here.
That's okay, well, yeah.
We have, I can give you my copy. And I should have mentioned, the reason for this is sometimes if you've been at a ceremony at the North Bridge, you can't hear for a while if there's noise overhead. So we thought this was a very important event, only happens every 50 years or so. We're hoping they will approve our request.
Except for the military flyover.
Right.
We'll plan for that, right?
That would be funny. Okay, so have we invited the president and the vice president? Which one?
We have sent invitations earlier, earlier in this calendar year to our VIP list, which would include the president and the vice president. We are planning to send those invitations again to our VIP list here this fall, just because.
Okay.
Good.
People have been busy, and they haven't responded to that first invitation.
Okay.
And we're also mindful there's a national election.
I was going to say post-election too.
That's exactly, so, so there, we, we presented enough of the invitations so that we don't have to incur that cost again, other than the postage, to put them into the mail.
Okay.
Okay, I think this is.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions?
Um, the other thing is, when I go back to HATS and HFAC, I'm going to ask if they will support this letter. They did not want to send their own letter, they wanted to see this letter first, and then they may send in something to support it.
Something separate?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This letter should go, go as soon as it's approved.
I hope, I hope, maybe Terry, you will reach out to our congressional delegation, because I think.
Yeah, they're on.
If you get the door open at the FAA, it's going to require, I mean, I know they get copies of the letter, but it's going to be the follow-up with their office, right, to say, you got the letter, we need to talk.
Good point.
And make it happen, because they get lots of letters, right?
Could that be, Chris?
Yeah, I'm almost positive we've already started that conversation.
Oh, great.
Good.
Good.
Okay, move to approve the no-fly zone letter for April 19th, 2025.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. McKinnon?
Aye.
Ms. Raveli?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, next is the ESPR letter. So, letter?
Right, okay, so that's the other letter. Okay, so just very quickly, the ESPR is, it's like a five-year plan that they do for Hanscom, and it stands for Environmental Status and Planning Report. I took a lot of this language from some of the other groups that are also sending in these comments, because the ESPR is 500 pages long, and I have to admit, I did not read the entire thing, plus all the appendices. However, I think that there are some main categories, like greenhouse gas emissions, in particular number four, the buffer area that they refer to. I, I found that honestly offensive, being a person who walks through Great Meadows, for example, to think of Great Meadows as beautiful place of solitude and wildlife, and they think of it as a buffer area where jets can come through. And so there was Chris Elliott, the chair of the HFAC, had written about this. I also put this in. So I don't want to bore anyone, go through the whole letter, but the comments are due the 12th, which is Thursday. So I'm hoping we can send in some letter, either this one or some amendments to this.
I'm wondering if Eric Sims would be available to spend some time on it. What do you think, Carrie?
Do you know if, he hasn't been involved?
He has not. I'd be happy to ask for his input. The only thing is, I won't be able to come back to the Select Board before the 12th.
What about, what about approving a conditional upon, and I, I trust that Eric knows how to do this a lot better than I do.
Right, you can delegate to.
Yeah.
Whoever.
He's, he is very good at this kind of thing, so.
He's really good at it, yes. This is right up his alley. It's an idea, what do you think?
I thought it was a very strong letter. I mean, you know, it's one of those ones that, it's one of those letters that you read, and as you read it, you get sort of more and more agitated about, about the whole idea of this project and.
This is, this is not about the north expansion. This is about that Hanscom needs a five-year plan, and they need to be mindful of these things.
Yeah, I guess on my daily walks, particularly on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays, when I'm right under the flight path and there's a plane going over every three minutes, it seems, I, it captured how I feel about it.
Okay, great.
I mean, I think the letter is, from what I can see, looks, looks really good. I, I can't see any harm if there's somebody who's kind of an expert in reviewing it, so.
Did you just review it?
Yeah, yeah, if you want to just approve it, subject to us working by, with Eric and getting in for sure.
Great, good, okay.
Yeah, Terry, you did, you did a really nice job. I recognize a lot of these arguments, and even some of the details on the noise, really, it, it catches you. It's striking, so, good job.
I did not, I did not write all of this. I plagiarized a lot of it from other people on, on.
You cribbed a lot of great points.
So, do you want to just delegate it to me to work with Eric?
Sure.
Yes.
Great, I will send it to him right away.
Okay, so we need a motion, or?
Move to provide conditional approval of the HATS SPR letter, subject to further work by Terry and the Director of Sustainability.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Yep, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. McKinnon?
Aye.
Ms. Raveli?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, thank you.
So Andrea, as soon as Eric and I finish, I'll send it over to you, I guess, because the CC list is super long. Oh, actually, the other one has the longer, the other one's ready to go now, I guess, as soon as we sign it, and then the CC lists are going to take a lot of time, thank you.
Okay. Very good. Next up is the proposed flag policy.
Yeah, so why don't I, I'll, I'll start and kind of talk us through this, and then Wendy's on the line also and can, can jump in as needed. So we, we met, I think, back in August with the Select Board. We reviewed sort of the, the concepts that we wanted to, to cover. I, I think there was, at the time, the, the Select Board feedback was, let's look to draft a policy that is a policy that would allow for, you know, a. that would allow for, you know, other ceremonial flags to be flown at certain times. And let's put together kind of a policy that sort of reflects that, as well as reflects just the overall kind of policies of how we fly flags in the town. So we've drafted the language, proposed language. Wendy and I have gone through it in several different meetings. We've also had our legal counsel review it and provide comments. So the intention of the document, and it's three pages, the intention is to cover just sort of what flags fly, starting with the U.S. military flags, federal, state, and local flags. There's also a section that just makes sure we're covering flags of United Nations and sister cities. And then also, what we're calling ceremonial flags, which would be any flags that might fly for parades, holidays, or celebrations. So we've gone through and established sort of what the process would be for, in particular, flying any ceremonial flags, where it would need to be something that is requested by a select board member, that actually has to sort of... Then we've inserted the legal counsel, suggested we also make sure that that sort of comes, request comes in and is brought by the town manager, along with the select board member that would like to propose it to the select board for approval. So that's kind of, you'll see that also in the language that's drafted. And on the second page of the document, we've highlighted there are a couple of places where we still wanted to have some discussion on very specific points. So there could be other points that people want to bring up and talk about, but we know that there are three points on the second page that we want to talk about. So specifically, the first one would be talking about whether the flag, a ceremonial flag would fly on the town flag pole, or whether there would be, an alternative would be on a temporary flag pole in the town center. The second point of discussion would be the duration for a ceremonial flag, whether we just sort of say, hey, look, it's, you know, really just flown on one day. And then the third point would be, and I think we talked about this a little bit in the last meeting, is again, flying it in sort of that one location, or do we have... We have lots of different flag poles and temporary flag poles in town, like whether a ceremonial flag would fly in any other locations. So that's just kind of the overview. I'll stop there. You look like, Carrie, like you want to ask a question.
I do.
Yes.
Very perceptive. I'm embarrassed that I didn't pick this up before. So on the first page, international flags.
Yes.
Under number one, it says temporary poles. Is that if there is a temporary pole, or is... Have you identified something as a temporary pole?
So Wendy can probably comment more on our inventory, but when we say a temporary pole, I mean, it's basically a holder that you can put a flag in. So we have temporary... We have holders on, like, light poles. You know, there's been times when we have a holder in a sidewalk, where you can sort of put a flag, basically. So it's just, it's not a permanently erected flag pole. It's a holder where you can just put the flag in. So we didn't want to be super specific on saying the town will always have this many temporary poles, or the temporary poles will always be in these locations. It's just from a policy standpoint, it's, you know, those are really where we would have... I think our practice, I mean, practically speaking, our practices, there are some holidays where we put the U.S. flag in some of those poles. So essentially, that's, it's saying that it would be at the town manager's discretion to be doing that.
Yeah. The intention was to memorialize our current practice, which is on the light poles. I think it just gives us some additional flexibility, should we need to. But I don't, we didn't explicitly... I can't remember how we put other temporary poles in there, Cameron. I don't remember we had that originally, but if that's a concern, Carrie, then we should. I don't think it was our intention.
No, it's not a concern. I just wanted to make sure I understood the intent.
Yep.
Yep. The temporary ones are really for the United Nation flags, where we use those wooden poles on the sidewalks. And then the sister city flag by the town hall.
So Cameron and Wendy, when, your first question here on page two about the alternative temporary flag pole?
Yep.
I know we talked about that a little bit, and at first I thought that was a good idea, and I've completely changed my mind. I really have. I feel like, you know, the ceremonial flag should be flown on the center flag pole. I'd like to have a separate conversation about how many flag poles do we have. But a temporary flag pole, first of all, where would it be? How long would it take? What approvals do we need? I just feel like we're asking for trouble, kind of, and we've got flag poles. So that's my current thinking on that.
So Wendy and I were totally fine with what you just said, which is, we just wanted to make sure that it was presented as an option, because you had brought it up.
Yeah, I did.
So unless somebody else has a desire to do that, we can take that one out and say, you know, what we would intend to do is raise it on the town center flag pole. Okay. Terry, I see you have a...
Yeah, I had a question on the purpose section. In the second paragraph, the third line, it says, "The flag poles are not intended, they do not serve as a forum for free expression by the public, but rather as a non-public forum." That word is really throwing me off. This not... What do you mean, non-public forum?
This is some language that I know has been used in other towns, but the point is, it's not supposed to be a freedom of speech. Everyone can just use it for the public. The idea is that it's the select board's discretion, and it's our government's speech.
Right. But I think when we say non-public, I was thinking, well, it means the public is not going to see the flag. I just found that phrase really confusing. And, you know, it's not on public land. It didn't really make sense to me.
So do you propose striking that word, non-public? I'm just thinking, if we did that, does it change anyone's...
Yeah, that would work, rather as a forum for the display.
I would just want to ask our legal.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's...
Because I think that's all. It's just, what we're trying to convey is, this isn't a public thing. This is actually a non-public thing.
That came out of...
Well, it is public.
I know, but in this definition, it's not... What it's intended to say is, it's not, the flying of the flag is not a public forum. You can ask our legal. I mean, I don't mind taking it out if our legal folks say, we're fine.
No, I think that's a good idea. Go with legal.
The intention is, it's more like an announcement system for...
I'm getting it now, but the way it was...
Yeah, it's a slightly cumbersome wording of that, but I think the spirit of it is that it's...
I think it pulled right out of a policy.
Correct.
Yes. So we'll just double-check the legal ramifications of taking that out, if...
Or some other word they can put in or something.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, what about your second question?
Okay, so the second point is around ceremonial flags are intended to be flown on the day of the event. There was a, at least what Wendy and I discussed, is, you could say something else around period of, or longer at the discretion of the select board.
Yeah, I think the bold, you could either include or drop that bold section for duration or during the period associated celebration at the discretion of the select board. So the intention here is to have that discussion, right? So do we want to stick with the day and see how this goes?
We toyed with this language a couple of times, just so for reference. We originally wrote it as 24, with, you know, for 24, no longer than 24 hours. I think the intention, at least for me, is, you know, it should be, if we're going to do something, it's usually typically on the day of an event, the day of a celebration, that that's really sort of the intention of the policy and the intention of having kind of a celebration and a flag raising.
So what if we included, or during the period of, you know, a longer period than one day, but we would use language that said, "That's not typical"?
Yeah. I mean, my worry about, so just my own, my worry about sort of saying, hey, or longer, or as extended, is then people come and say, "Well, it's such and such a month," or "It's such and such a week," or "It's this, that," and then we get into, "Well, why did you let them do it for this long, but you didn't let me do it for this long?" And so to me, I feel like it kind of opens up a whole other... So that's why I always kind of think, like, in my personal, this is my personal feeling, is that it should be, look, we're going to have an event, we're going to have a flag raising. It should be, you know, typically sort of a one-day...
But we don't have to have an event. We could have just a proclamation.
Yes, an event, sorry, an event or proclamation, right. But that typically, when you're raising a flag, you're doing it for the day.
So Wendy, did you, what were your thinking, what was your thinking on this? Have you thought about it a lot more than we have?
Well, with Cameron, we were both originally proposing for a day, for consistency. But, you know, this is an option. The other thing that, just to keep in mind here, this is not, it's been, you know, with input from town council, a little discussion, but it's not a public request process. The select board is making this request. So we technically are responsible for writing this request to the town manager. So things like this language are within our discretion. But to Cameron's point, you know, we should be consistent and have a rule behind it. So it gives us the discretion, and we really, we think, we as a group, should we decide how we want to handle this. I'm okay with it, but I generally think we would approve it for a day, in practice.
What would be an exception, where the select board might want to approve it for two days or three? I can't even...
A month.
Yeah.
So let's say the town wanted to have a town celebration, I don't know, for a whole weekend. And I don't know what even that would be.
The kind of event that I think of is something like the Olympics, which is, you know, has an opening ceremony, has a closing ceremony, and, you know, you fly the Olympic flag around the city for however long that goes on.
So what if we had language, you know, like ceremonial flags are intended to be flown only on the day of the event or proclamation, and then unless specifically voted by the select board, or something like that?
Everything's voted by the select board.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
Unless...
As somebody who said before, you know, I am worried about, once we open it up to more than one day, then we're going to have a hard time explaining why everything's not open for more than one day. So I'm okay with the one day.
Yeah, so I might, I might tweak that to say, only on a specific day, rather than the day of the event.
Yes, yes.
You know, and then...
Only for one specific day, or something like that, yes.
You know, so whatever...
Only on one day?
Yeah, only on a specific day. So pick your day.
For one day.
Ask for the day. That way, we...
Yep.
Good. That's very good. Okay. In the interest of time, do we want to tackle the...
So the last one, right.
Do we want to tackle that tonight?
Yeah, well, so the last one is point number four, which is just, again, so we...
Oh, yeah, the flag pole.
So it's just the, there's a lot of towns who write just like, look, this is the one flag pole where you're going to put it on. Some other towns, honestly, are just, they don't really say. They're just kind of, like, they just don't really say whether it's just going to be in one or in multiple. So there is an option that you can say, look, the way this is written, the rest of it is written, is this is, the town center flag pole is where we're going to raise the flag. You could also say, we're going to allow it, flags to be put in other locations. I, again, have the same sort of concern, which is, like, how do we decide? And then how do we go and say, oh, well, we let some people fly additional flags in locations, but not others? Who's paying for it when we have to have the fire department put the flags up, take the flags down, all that stuff? So, but it's, I mean, it's just, it's not something we resolved, I feel like, in the last discussion, so.
The flags on the light poles, for instance, these are, this is harder to commit to them going up and coming down in the same day, because typically, Public Works is doing that, and, you know, it's just, it's not the easiest thing, because they need a bucket truck. And it's not the same thing as taking the, using the flag pole, so...
So it can't conform to our one-day...
It would be, it's harder to do that.
Well, and it requires people to work overtime, right, because they may have to pick them up later after hours, right? So it's a cost to the town as well.
So Carrie, what would work? What do you recommend? Should we not have a number four at all, or what would work?
Well, and I'll just remind this group that in the recent Flag Day celebration, we did have these, and it was very well-received. So I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty...
So how do we get it to work?
But I don't think it has to be, I mean, if we do it, there should be some leeway in the same way that, you know, the fire department raises and lowers the flag, but they can't always get it, you know, down on that day if other emergencies are there. I just, if we can soften the language, it doesn't have to be just a day.
I mean, my personal preference is to not have it, as I state mine, just simply because, again, it's, you're back into like, well, we do it for this, but not for that, or we got to spend money to put them up, take them down. And it just, to me, opens up, you know, a bunch of other things there.
Is that other than, other than the American flags? I mean, I...
Yeah, oh, no, the American flag is separate. This is talking specifically about...
Just the ceremonial flags.
So the American flags on the, it's town manager's discretion. So this is, if we're having a celebratory event.
Ceremony of flags on...
Right. And we're saying, okay, we're definitely going to put one up on the town center flag pole for the day, to say, hey, look, we're celebrating this. It has been a proclamation, has been, you know, whatever it is that we, the select board has agreed, yes, we're going to put that flag up. There's a question of, should we also say, hey, that maybe we should, maybe we would allow the same flag to sort of go up and pick a number of other locations on those light poles, right? But again, to me, it starts to feel like it's a little bit of a...
As a practical matter, this is the kind of thing that's usually associated with some sort of parade or event like that, and, you know, falls into a little bit more of the realm of decorations, rather than some statement of public speech. And I...
But they are flags.
But the issue is, it's on town property. They are flags. We have to put them up. We have to take them down. That's...
This isn't quite the same thing, but we do have a process by which, you know, these banners that go all the way across the street are hung by the light plan. I believe there's even a cost associated with that, that's meant to defray. And again, it's, you know, as work permits, you're not hanging banners when there's an electric outage or something like that. But it feels to me like there's a distinction I'd like to make between the opportunity to, you know, put up seasonal decorations and something that reflects, reflects the festivities versus something that's, you know, associated with a proclamation or something. I don't know quite how to...
I think if we, if we didn't allow this, that wouldn't preclude us from having more of the decoration-type thing.
Yeah.
Being put up on these poles. It just wouldn't be a flag.
Yeah, I mean, this is specific to town-owned flag poles.
Yeah, but these are these flag holders that are attached to poles. Yeah.
Like...
Just because it's a flag holder, doesn't have to be a flag.
This is specifically on light poles.
I guess my suggestion, maybe you're about to make the same one, but I'm not, I think, I don't want to make the perfect be the enemy of the good. I think this, I think without four, we've made good progress at clarifying, and I'd like to know how that main flag pole is handled. And if we want to circle back and discuss what to do with the flag holders on light poles and some other, maybe even less formal set of guidelines, I'd be okay with that.
That's a great idea.
Take it out.
Yeah, take it out for now.
So Mark, can we just talk about those guidelines? How would this be handled in the absence of this policy? It's a process thing, because you sort of spoke to it. We want to do it, we can handle it in some other, like a set of guidelines. Does that mean, like, Celebrations Committee would handle?
Well...
Would come to us with a proposal for...
Yeah, I guess, I mean, you know, again, the idea that it's a festival, or it's a parade, or something like that, I'm thinking that there's already sort of permitting that goes along with those kinds of events that could be, could be extended to say, and oh, by the way, if you want this at, or...
As long as it's not a flag.
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as it's not a flag.
As long as it's not a flag.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
Is that okay?
I don't know. I don't know.
Wait, we got to, wait.
Well, I'm, I'm just the process, so as long as we can work out that process, I'm okay with it.
Okay, well, do, are you guys inclined to hold this until we sort of boil this one down?
No, it's not.
That's what I'm getting at.
I like the idea of going forward with what we have now and, because we've made this much progress and then we can add number four somehow later.
Well, but Wendy's asking, when is the later?
What happens until later?
That's the process, right, so is this a Celebrations Committee responsibility that they put forth or?
Well, I think, I mean.
I think, okay, let's, let's say we've made progress tonight, okay, and let's, how about we come back to the select board and talk about what's the next step for number four?
Well, we can, yeah, I mean, we can revise the document as we've talked about.
Right.
And bring it back, we will bring it back without that, that section, but, I mean, obviously, we'll still have to come back for final approval, right, so, you know, it wouldn't, we're not approving it tonight, it sounds like, we're approving, you know, we'll come back with the changes and say, here's proposed final.
No, actually, I was thinking we'd approve it tonight.
Well, yeah, me too, but then I forgot about this non-public thing that has to go to town council anyways on the page.
I think we need to listen to the public.
Okay.
You want to say something?
It's not clear to me what you're deciding, so I was sort of waiting to, just for the, the behalf of the public, you keep referring to number four, could someone just say what number four is?
Yeah, sorry, so number four is, there's a section here that we said we didn't know if it was something we would include. And so there's a, there's a policy written that basically says, when we have a ceremony, when we have one of the celebratory flags, that we would put it on the town center flag pole. There is also the potential that we've been debating around this section four to add, which says the town, with the approval of the town manager and select board, may fly blank number of ceremonial flags on other flag holders attached to town light poles, so.
That's what you're trying to determine, whether to take that part out.
Whether to take that part out.
And if we, if we did remove it, what would we do in the meantime around requests like that?
You know, leaving it in here, it's May, which is that every time it came up, it would come up. Right, so maybe the safest thing to do would be to leave it in.
Right, but so again, I mean, in my argument is.
You would say no when it came up.
I would say no, be, well, right, but I would also say, then you have a policy where you're going to be, you know, why, why them, not us, why this, not that, I've got to pay the fire department overtime to put them up, take them down.
How many times a year does this even come up?
Once.
Once a year of this happens?
Well, we don't know.
Well.
We don't know.
We've only approved, well, we've only.
I think there's been two this year so far, right?
I, I think, I think the issue is, we're not sure. I think for the most part ceremonies and celebrations have been putting flags up related to events that they are doing without seeking specific approval, and then we had one, one instance this year where we had flags that were other than the US flag that were put on those holders.
Without approval, there was no process.
I, I wouldn't.
I mean, it wasn't like they were.
I think I would just, we were silent, I don't, I don't think there was a specific request that was made, it was understood that.
That's right, yep.
Yeah.
So Joe, do you have something?
Well, I think from our perspective, it was similar to what Mark had mentioned, at least my memory of that event and what we are talking about is the, the Pride Progress flags that went up in June were part of the decorations for the parade, and it was a way to make the town with a more festive and supportive of the events that were going on. So we would, our memory was, it was like Mark said, part of the decoration.
Yeah.
It just happens that that decoration happens to be a flag, but it's not a flag of a country, it's just a flag of a, of a celebration, yeah.
Whether it's a decoration or a flag.
But, and we do know, as I think Wendy mentioned, it was very popular, and the thing that's not been mentioned in any of this conversation is any of these flags, we're talking about what it makes people feel and how it makes people appreciate the, the welcoming nature of the town, so that this needs to be a part of your decision, I think, whether you do it tonight or later.
Okay, good point, thank you, Joe. In the interest of time, because we do have to save our energy for, we have other important things to think about, I'm going to ask that we circle back, we get the information about the, the words from legal, do we have to keep in that non-public thing, and then we circle back to this at a future meeting and look at this number four again.
Okay.
Yep.
And thank you for the work.
Yeah, and so we'll, yeah, so we'll, we'll make the other changes, we'll come back, we'll get on another meeting, propose final, and if there's.
And we'll have clearer heads and we know.
And either, either with it taken out or if there's an alternative suggestion, we can finalize that debate.
Good job.
Really, thank you, thank you. So we made, we made a lot of progress on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Next item on our agenda is issuing a lot of bonds. Raising a lot of money.
Good point, Mary.
So, good evening, everybody, I first want to introduce our financial advisors who work with us through the debt issuance process from Hilltop Securities, and they're online with us tonight. It's Cindy McNerney, who is the Senior Managing Director with Hilltop Securities, and Lisa Driscoll, who is our Senior Vice, Senior Vice President with Hilltop Securities, who I work with very closely with this issuance and the past issuance as well, so they're with us here tonight as well. So just to recap, the memo I forwarded to you, which is included in the packet, we're going out for long-term bonds in the amount of $39,560,000. We expect the offering, the seal to happen on Thursday, September 19th at 11:00 AM. There's projects, there's six different capital projects from FY23 that we're looking to bond for. I'm happy to go through them if anybody wants to, other than that, I'm just going to move along. The big issuance, and the total for that is $4,561,000. The largest chunk of this 39-plus million dollar issuance is for the middle school construction, and that's $35 million. Part of this process is that we have to do a rating call with Moody's. We did that rating call on September 28th.
August 28th.
I'm, I'm sorry, no, yes, yes, I'm sorry.
It says September, but it's okay.
Yeah, sorry about that, I had COVID that time, so, yeah. But, you know, happy to report that Moody's reaffirmed our AAA bond rating, which is great news, this is 22 years in a row for Concord, and really, it's one of 14 communities in the Commonwealth that have a AAA bond rating from Moody's. Many others have it through Standard and Poor, but Moody's is a little bit more challenging to get, so we're among, I consider us among the elite in Massachusetts. Just on that, I think Carrie forwarded you that information, one of the things that we, you know, you've heard me talk about last year is really our reserves and, you know, and right now, our biggest reserves was free cash and not using that. So that's something that, I know we've had a lot of conversations with building up our reserves and talking about a, a new policy that we can put some money into a debt stabilization and capital stabilization account, which is very important to maintain that AAA bond rating. So with that, the debt was reaffirmed, like I said, on September 15th. The only other requirement that we need to do tonight is to extend the maximum useful life for the following equipment, and the first one is for roadway improvements, it's traffic signals and signage, which requires 11-year useful life certification, and then the heavy equipment, which, in this situation, it was a big dump truck, and extending that to, by one year, so a six-year useful life. And then school facility improvements requires six-year life certification vote. Just on the, on the vehicle, it's, this is, this isn't uncommon for Concord to extend the useful life, you've done it before with the truck, the year, you know, we, we keep those trucks for 12 years, those big dump trucks, and we actually stretch it sometimes to 15 years, so, you know, obviously, we can't borrow longer for something that we have shorter time for, so that's not the case in this situation. One of the things, and actually, I think it worked out for us, and Cindy and Lisa can chime in, but one of the things that I was always concerned with, and Carrie and I kept having this conversation, what is the best time to borrow? And normally, we would have went out in May to do the borrowing, and we kind of hemmed in hard and, you know, watching the interest rates, and I guess if, you know, we had crystal balls, we wouldn't be sitting in this room, we'd be somewhere else on a beach, but it worked out for us because the interest rates have gone down. So I feel pretty confident too, in speaking with Cindy and Lisa, that although the feds are talking about interest rate cuts, as, as Cindy and Lisa and I had the discussion, that really Cindy was really helpful in this, is that the market does start to make the adjustments prior to the feds making that, so.
Expectation, yeah.
Yeah, so right now, they have been seeing some lower, lower issuances, and, and so I'm feeling pretty good about where I think that this will end up. And speaking to another Morgan Stanley representative, he too is just, you know, Concord's a very secure bond for, for folks to want to purchase, so he feels like we're going to make out pretty good too, so. You know, tonight, I'm looking for the select board to agree with this plan and then take the vote to extend the useful life. Certainly, if you have questions for Cindy and Lisa, they came tonight, so they're happy to answer questions as well.
I have a question, so are these going out with a specific coupon rate? Do these have coupons? Can somebody tell me the mechanics of this, Lisa?
Sure, so we're in the process of preparing the preliminary official statement to advertise the sale of the bonds, so we will distribute the offering documents to the market this week, and then next week, we'll take bids at a date and time certain on an electric platform, and we'll, you know, receive all the coupons and yields from the various underwriters that are putting forth their bid, and we'll, you know, accept the bidder that provides the lowest cost to borrow for the town.
Do you have an estimate right now?
Yes, so based on current market rates.
Yep.
We're estimating the, the true interest cost of the borrowing to be, you know, approximately 3.6%. And of course, that's, you know, preliminary and subject to change, but that's based on what we're seeing in the market right now.
Carrie, when we, when we were doing the, what we expected the impact to be from the middle school debt on our property tax bills, I think we assumed something really close.
Four percent.
There you go.
And everybody thought we were crazy.
Right.
Yep.
Good, very good. Okay, thank you.
Cindy, I hope I did a good job explaining that interest rate. Did I do okay?
You did a great job. Now, you should do, I think the town should do really well, the market right now assumes that, already has built into that 3.6 estimated TIC, already has built in to its expectations that the Fed not only is going to make some cuts in their rates before December, but that there'll be several rate cuts next year. So that's all been built into the current rate market, so we're seeing a lot of acceleration of debt, especially into getting the market before the presidential election, given the uncertainty surrounding that. And so this is a good time, there is a lot of volume in the market, it's a 25-year bond, AAA is in a league of its own, so this will be, what we see, given the aggregate size, there'll be a lot of interest in this issue.
Great, good to hear. Any other questions?
No.
Do we have a motion?
Okay, so I want to make sure, I have a long bit to read, but I think that, since this is basically in the past tense, we might want to make the motion to extend the maximum useful life of traffic signals and signage to 11 years, heavy equipment to six years, and school building improvements to a maximum useful life of six years, and vote that, and then I'll read that we voted that and confirm that, so I'm making that motion.
Second.
And any further questions or discussion, great, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. McKennan?
Aye.
Ms. Revelli?
Aye.
Myself, Mr. Howell, aye, okay. I, the clerk of the board, the Select Board of the Town of Concord in Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the board held on September 9th, 2024, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following vote was unanimously passed, which appears upon the official record of the board in my custody. We voted the maximum, that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below is hereby determined pursuant to General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, to be as followed. Authorized date on 4/30/23, Article 11, traffic signal and signage in the amount of $515,000 with a maximum useful life of 11 years, authorized on 4/30/23, Article 11, heavy equipment replaced 2028 gross vehicle, G V W R, sorry, 300,000, maximum useful life of six years. 4/30/23 authorized, Article 18, school building improvements in the amount of 495,000 with a maximum useful life of six years. I further certify that the vote was taken in a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which the agenda included the adoption of the above vote, was filed with the town clerk, and a copy therefore posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building, that the office of the town clerk is located or, if applicable, in accordance with alternative methods of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.03, paren two, paren B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturday, Sunday, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remains so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the subject matter of this vote were taken in executive session, all in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25 as amended, dated September 9th, 2024.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Ms. Hartman?
Aye.
Mr. McKennan?
Aye.
Ms. Revelli?
Aye.
And myself, aye, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Anthony.
You're welcome. Who? I'm staying.
Thank you, Hilltop.
Thank you.
Welcome, have a nice day.
You too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Passing these around. Is this an update?
No, it's just a, it's a, it's a big, it's a.
Oh, it's what we have already.
It's what, it's what you have, and I just.
My computer died, so I'm very thankful.
All right, so we're ready to talk about ARPA?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, great, all right. So I did just hand out a, a larger-sized copy of the spreadsheet, it is the same thing that is in, that was in your packet that's posted online, but I just want to make sure everybody can, can see. So a month ago, we had a fairly short discussion, I think, on ARPA, an update. So just to refresh, refresh your memory, in fiscal '22, the town received $5,654,000 in ARPA funds to mitigate the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. I mentioned that the school received its own set of, of grants from the federal government, the ESAR funds, to mitigate educational impacts to the COVID-19 pandemic. The select board, when the money came in, we had some discussions, we've had many discussions about how to use the money. And the select board decided that probably the best approach was to consider up to 25% of the funds each year to be considered through the budget and capital planning process. So we did that in '23 and '24. We did make a sort of a, in '22, we did make a smaller appropriation. What we found, there have been a lot of changes to this program as we've worked through it. But the main issue is that under the guidelines of the program, we have to have 100% of the funding committed by December 31st, 2024, and expended by December 31st, 2026. And so we really need to be looking at all of the remaining funding and make allocations of that. Now, we have confirmed that we are able to commit through an internal grant process. So we have a legal document that we would be having any grant recipient enter into, much like we're doing with the Affordable Housing Trust now when funds are going out. So we are comfortable with that process. So what we have done since we met with you last time is we went through and updated expenditures and commitments to date. And we found that we are able to return a total of $213,641 back to the pool because we've had some purchases and projects that have been closed out for less than the original allocation. And so we've taken that into account. Since you last saw this spreadsheet, there have been a couple of other things that have been added to it. There was a fairly large request from CMLP broadband for some consideration for funding to make some improvements, particularly in the center. That's something that really is outside of the scope of, financially outside of the scope of what we could manage, from my perspective, in, within this grant program. Doesn't mean that those projects won't go forward because they are needed and necessary, but are likely to be funded just through rates.
But we could partially fund? You, I mean, it's not something we would have to fund the whole thing for?
Right. No, we certainly, they, they would take any allocation. I think because of the timing, there have been a lot of requests that have been on the table for a long period of time. But part of the process here is just for you to see what my thought process is, which has been informed by feedback that I've received from select board members, and see if we can get some consensus on these particular projects.
I guess my comment about the broadband would be that I remember those early discussions about what process and what road we were going down around ARPA. And at that time, I remember personally mentioning the fact that because I was involved with the Fiber Completion Task Force, that there was an opportunity. Certainly, the B grants are going forward. There was quite a bit of discussion during the pandemic at that time that broadband and internet service was something that was high on people's list and encouraged the team to bring forward some requests. And certainly, that was part of the recommendations of the Fiber Completion Task Force. And they really didn't come forward, so I'm glad to see it now. I guess, you know, depending on how the rest of this falls out, I would think of whether there's an opportunity to cede that process with some, you know, design funds or some other planning that would get at it. Because certainly, I would recognize the Concord Center and the West Concord conduit issues as being longstanding issues for the ability of the broadband service, particularly to support the economic vitality of our businesses and communities. So this has been an area that, you know, needs attention. And so I'd be very sympathetic to seeing that developed into some set of phasing that might be appropriate to come forward.
So. I'm all for helping out the businesses in the center of town and in West Concord Village. I hate to see it be storefronts. But I always thought that broadband was like an enterprise fund and should be able to fund its own investments through the revenue that it earns from its services. So why would we, wouldn't that, so this would be outside of that? So we're saying use town money to fund an enterprise fund? Or to fund capital improvements for an enterprise fund? Is that what you're proposing?
I'm saying that, I'm not suggesting that the entire amount might be there, but I, you know, being familiar with how the broadband business finances are and the level of resources that's available to them, and the need to keep rates competitive, it would be worthwhile to try and make some investments. And that's why I framed it in terms of economic vitality interests. So the primary finding of the Fiber Completion Task Force was that following the most, the best economic return, operating strictly as an enterprise fund, has the result of, you know, favoring the easy things and pushing the more difficult things off for another day. And so what I'm, just in, similar to affordable housing, if you want to keep up with economic vitality, sometimes it makes sense to give that an assist. So would the enterprise eventually serve some of these locations? Yeah, I imagine it would, but eventually is a long time.
Does the CMLP have reserves that they could use to fund some of these capital improvements for broadband?
I'm not familiar with what they have in the fund.
Do they?
They do. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Yeah.
What they have for reserves, but they are generally well-positioned.
Yeah, I would think that it would be natural for the Broadband Enterprise Fund to go to the CMLP and say, we've got a proposal. We'd like to make an investment because we think we'll get it back through the revenues that we generate, and we have this because there's an opportunity in the villages for economic development. And so it's a business, it's not a town service. And that's what an enterprise fund is. So I would rather the money came from an enterprise fund than a town, than being subsidized by town. Because every dollar we take out of ARPA, you know, we don't have it available for some other.
I'm wondering if I could just take a minute to run through.
Sure.
The items, just because I know not everybody's looking at.
That's great. Just before you do that, I have one sort of, I don't know, procedural question. But so stuff that's approved but not spend it, but not spent, is that untouchable, or is that like?
Well, there have been commitments made. Some of them would be commitments that are tied up in contracts. Some of them might be things that are not yet tied up in contract, but there is an intention to use it for the stated purpose. So they would be harder to get at.
Okay.
But we certainly could take another look. If there is particularly, if there's an item that's very important to the select board that is not.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I mean, we can get into it. I just wanted to know, like, are we just looking at the two columns on the right? Or is there, if there's, you know, because there's a fair amount of money that was approved but not spent? So just.
Yeah.
I think that was a timing thing, right?
Well, I mean, it is timing. Some of it is bandwidth. A lot of this is not moving as fast as I would like. And there may be some opportunity to.
Yeah.
Reprogram if there are things that, again, are of particular importance that are not showing on this list.
Carrie, I looked down this, do you want to go through the list?
Yeah.
As you go through, if we have a question on a certain item, do you want us to interrupt or wait till you get through the whole thing?
Well, I'm, how about just let me go through them? I will just say what they are, the dollar amount, and just say a couple of things about them.
Okay.
Just so everybody can hear. So again, there are a dozen items that are proposed. The first, and these are in no particular order, well, actually, they are. They are in budget-cost-center order.
No priority.
No priority. The first, for general government technology, for munis payroll, $100,000. This would allow us to implement this additional module. And I think the thing to me that makes this important is that once this is up and running, we have a fully integrated ERP. And I would expect that we would be saving at a minimum $50,000 a year by having one ERP running all of our financials. The second, general government, 250th, the 250th Committee, the Tree Initiatives for $125,000. I know you're aware of that, we just spoke of that. Department of Planning and Land Management, Affordable Housing, a half million dollars. This would go to the Affordable Housing Trust. But my recommendation is to prioritize the purchase of 91B Main Street, which is a state-owned property, and work with a private developer to build what we've been calling workforce or community housing, not specifically, not 80% AMI affordable housing. Department of Planning and Land Management, Transportation Initiatives, $50,000. This would be for the Route 2 corridor study. This funding would be to help us work with MassDOT on improvements identified in their recent study. And I will mention that I do have, I believe Steve Duker, the town engineer, is still on the call, Alan Cathcart, Public Works Director, if you have specific questions when we get to that point. Next, Transportation Initiatives, $9,400. This would provide matching funds to make sidewalk improvements on Lowell Road at Concord Market. These are funds matched with the landowner to complete a project there. Transportation Initiatives, $125,000. This is a, would be funding a partnership with the Thoreau Farm, Minuteman National Park, to construct a multimodal, and what I mean here is an ADA accessible path to connect the farm, the Minuteman National Park, across town property to the town center. We have very, very few ADA accessible natural paths in town. Next, in public safety, body worn camera replacement, $100,000. Now, this is something that should have been on a capital plan. It was not submitted. It is a critical need, and there is a strong concern by the police chief that we will have an issue with body worn the existing equipment before the 250th. ALS Paramedic Service, $150,000. We've talked about this somewhat, it was mentioned this evening. The town received a grant of nearly a million dollars from the federal government to implement ALS Paramedic Ambulance Service. This was a near 100% grant, but not, it won't, it won't fully fund the transition costs. $150,000 is what we would expect to match to that grant, and it is not budgeted in the fiscal '25 budget. Facilities, $100,000. This would be to fund, to look at an options analysis for the replacement of the Doug White Field.
What's PPP?
Public-private partnership. And we would expect the funding of the replacement to come from CC at Play, right? I think we've confirmed that most, if not all, of the funding would be through CC at Play, funds that they have been setting aside.
Besides this $100,000?
Yes, the $100,000 would be for the options analysis. Next is a million dollars for the Baker Avenue Culvert. This culvert has failed. Maintenance, the fix was not budgeted. This is a critical expense. Once we have our stormwater enterprise fund up and running and we are collecting a stormwater fee, we would not expect to find ourselves in the position of not having funding for these types of failures.
Do you really think it would be a million? Or is this just a kind of safe guess?
It is, it is an educated guess. It may be a little bit on the high side.
I understand, yeah. Okay. I know, I live near here, you know that. And my story that I've heard is that we're not really sure what the problem is. So a lot of, it's going to be a lot of exploratory work. Go ahead, sorry.
The next is additional funding for the Main Street-Baker Ave intersection, $450,000. And we would expect this would be the final phase of funding needed to complete the intersection improvements. And then finally, White Pond Drainage Study, $75,000. We have a lot of drainage issues over in the White Pond area. We're seeing more and more severe flooding. We've called out specifically the intersection of Dover Street and Darton Street. And we'd like to be able to do some work over there and see if we can come up with a solution for the various problems.
So this is just going to study it, it's not going to fix the problem?
It is not going to fix.
Are these private roads?
Alan or Steve? These are not private roads, correct? Or they are private roads?
Can you hear me? Carrie, this is Alan?
Yes.
Same, sure. There we go. Yeah, these are private.
Ways. What we're trying to do is address a problem that has been sort of chronic with drainage, where we actually have a bylaw that allows us, you know, through town meeting, to work with the neighborhood in the White Pond area to do what they call temporary improvements on private ways. This bylaw allows a mechanism for Public Works to work on a project, present a plan of work, establish betterments. In this particular case, it's fairly complex in that it involves a significant drainage issue, which is not just really the private way or the road. It's a significant drainage problem that sort of affects a large part of the neighborhood. And what we're looking to do is work on the administrative process and get some engineering involved, try and look at a solution that might be a permanent fix. Once we have a plan and a proposed cost estimate for the work, we bring that to the Public Works Commission to get a vote from a majority of the impacted property owners, which would then, you know, result in a betterment that would be assessed. So it's a multi-phase process, but this one is a little bit more complicated than most. And we're hoping that it's going to give us a pretty good model that might help us down the road. There's a lot of needs in the White Pond area. We know that because of the bylaw itself. But because of the drainage issue and the scale of it, we're looking to see if the town could support the effort, not through the taxes, but through this ARPA. That's the intent.
So does this set a precedent where if other private ways within town have problems, that they could also request town money to put together a study to figure out the cost to fix it?
I would argue it's not. Presley, the ARPA is the source of funds. So the vehicle is to be determined how successful it is. But given the drainage issue is connected to water quality and a public health issue, and also indirectly related to the White Pond, condition of White Pond, we thought it was, you know, it's fairly unusual.
So these 12 projects total $2,784,400. If there was an agreement to fund at these, at this level, we would have $63,960 left to allocate. And I did also want to mention that one of our early allocations was $400,000 for. And I did also want to mention that one of our early allocations was $400,000 for parking meter revenue. $297,000 of that remains, and we are not operating a parking meter program currently. And I don't foresee that we are going to do that. So, those funds would be available as well. But in order to access them, we need town meeting approval to close the parking meter fund. And there's no, there would be, from my perspective, no specific timetable on expending those because they've already been, they were already dedicated to parking meter.
We, at some point, need to figure out how to remove the park, there, there are also existing parking meters that are decoys or coin collectors or whatever we want to think of them as. But at some point, we need to actually shut down the, that as well, and I assume that has some cost.
Are we ever going back to?
Or, or decide to go back to, yeah.
So, I had a couple of quick questions about some of the other items on this list. So, the first one, this Munis payroll. We already did a transition from whatever software we had to Munis. But that didn't include payroll?
It did not. We use ADP for payroll, so the, the, we did general, general ledger tax. Do you want to?
So, we wouldn't have to use ADP anymore?
Wouldn't be using ADP.
Okay.
And is that where you're getting the savings from?
Well, there's actually two programs that, so Munis payroll and our HRIS system that Human Resources uses called Cornerstone. So, we'd be eliminating those two platforms and replacing it with Munis payrolls. We have one integrated system.
So, is the staff up and running enough on Munis, the rest of Munis now, that they're ready for another big change? Because I know that was such a big change for everybody. Are, are they, like, ready for another big change? Are we, are we, do we have the bandwidth to do this?
You know, will we ever have the bandwidth to do a lot of things, you know? It's just something that has to get done, and it's going to save us, you know, some, some money, and it's going to really, there's processes now that we're doing, still on paper, that is, communities moved away from this 20 years ago.
Yep, yep.
So, we're really behind, and it's one of those things where, honestly, I don't think we really have a choice. You know, I certainly, you know, bang my head against the wall talking to Carrie sometimes, and I bit off a lot more than, you know, we can chew, but, you know, is there ever a good time? And we just have to do it. So, we're, we're muddling through with it right now, where I'm pretty confident that by January 1st, we're up and running.
Okay, so just in the interest of time, so the public safety, the cameras are, like, only maybe three or four years old, I think? Like, how, how often are we going to have to replace them?
They're, they are much older than three or four years.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm losing track of time here.
Happens to me too.
Maybe seven years old then or so, I don't know. Seems like it's a recent thing to me, but I mean.
It's, it's not that recent.
Okay, so every, every, so often, we have to replace them? Okay. And then on the transportation, I am confused because I had thought that we had a grant and a contract with StanTech for $100,000. And I'm looking at these documents, it seems like we have $200,000.
So, you're, you're talking about a, a current project?
Right, Transportation Initiative Study, is that the StanTech?
The, the StanTech, the current study is funded through that fiscal '23 appropriation of $200,000. It's not the only thing that was funded out of that, but that's where the funding for that.
It's not the only thing that was.
It's not the only thing.
So, it's not $200,000 for StanTech? It's, there's other things in there?
That's correct.
Okay, because there's a $75,000 that, that might get added to the StanTech? I guess I'm, I'm really confused about how much money there is for the transportation study itself.
So, there is no additional funding being proposed? There was a request, but there is no additional funding being proposed for, to expand the scope of that study through ARPA funding?
Okay. So, how much of this $200,000 is the study?
It's 125, right? One, is it? Or is it 150? I'm sorry, I don't.
Yeah, I'm really, I, I'm really confused because it was 100, and then it got changed a few times. So, we are trying to get the scope approved now, and we're trying to figure out for that transportation study to change the scope of it.
You're going to increase the scope? But we're not sure that.
Well, I don't know, I might.
I think that's the question.
Well, the TAC has, has put together a really good vision that we're waiting to hear back from StanTech now.
But we're not sure we have the funding.
Exactly. So, I had heard that there might be more funding, and I'm just confused.
There is no, there is no additional funding being proposed. I, I know that there's a request, I believe that we're looking to re-scope.
Right.
Or redirect the study.
Right.
But my thought would be if there is, there is an addition, if there, if we are ready to authorize more funding for the transportation study that needs to come through the fiscal '26 budget and capital planning process.
Okay, it's just confusing here where it says Transportation Initiative Study and Matching Funds. I thought it was just the study, so there's other stuff in here. Okay, I, I kind of get it.
Well, no, I think, I think what I heard Carrie just say is that if there's, if the Transportation Advisory Committee wants any more money, it would have to come out of FY '26.
Right, 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 right. So, I'm not clear on the $200,000, but I can, we can do that offline, I, I get it, I'm just. Okay, my last question is on strategic plan. I see that there's a request or, or approved for, looks like $25,000?
That is a fiscal '24 allocation, yes.
And what, what was that for?
Carrie, I think tonight we're trying to decide how do we want to spend the money that's left? We're not doing an audit of the money that was already allocated.
Okay, this is, this is my last question.
So, if you've got a question, I think you can take it offline with Carrie at any time. But I think in the interest of time, I think we want to focus on.
I think, yeah, the question there might be, is that, is that money still available?
Yeah, I mean.
Strategic planning, is it?
No, I think she's got that here, which is how much money is still available.
Yes, but like, something like, yes, but strategic planning, like, are we going to use it? Or is it something that?
Right.
Well, maybe we should have another meeting where we talk about what's the.
Yeah, well, I was going to ask about process, right? So, 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 because I have circled about 10 things, which I'm going to guess if I went through all 10, we'd be here for a while, right? So, so we're not going to do that.
Okay.
So, how do we want to give Carrie the helpful feedback? Because again, I mean, some of this may be, in my opinion, is maybe we should spend less here and more over there. But, you know, we can debate that for hours, right?
Could I just make one comment about the prior years? All of the, the proposals for the prior years came before this board. And this board, while there wasn't an official vote, because the board agreed not to vote, they were all vetted through, through this board.
Right, but I think it would be helpful when we have another meeting to have a quick update about when it says committed, you know, where are we on it? So, we know going forward what, what we're doing.
Because we might say, hey, look, yeah, we talked about that, we, we said, let's go spend that money. It turns out, we didn't need that much, or, you know, so there's more that could come back in, maybe, right?
Yeah, I can tell you on the strategic plan, the finance committee, this, this was a top priority for the finance committee. In my self-evaluation of goals, I noted that there has not been significant progress there.
Right.
But that would be something that I would be pushing back on just because, to me, th, this is something that, that we need to, we need to work through.
I have one sort of comment about the, the list that, you know, I find a little bit puzzling. And by my way of thinking, there, there are three items on here which are, you know, look at alternatives and come up with a plan, and they are the, the Route 2 Corridor, the Doug White Field, and the White Pond Drainage Study seem to be. And when I think about the, the magnitude of what kind of investments might need to be made for those things, I, I'm finding it a little bit puzzling that the highest allocation for that is $100,000 for one field, and then $75,000 for a couple of admittedly small roads around White Pond, and only $50,000 for a Route 2 Corridor, which includes the Rotary and four or five other major intersections in town.
Maybe because it's a state road.
Well, yeah, but, you know, I think that our ability to influence the outcome of, of what happens around, and in the Route 2 Corridor probably is directly proportional to the resources that we put in. And if you just take those three, and this is probably not completely fair, in isolation, and you say, $100,000 to try to decide what the options are for an artificial turf field that, you know, has already cost the town a lot of money and versus the, the opportunity for, you know, some hopefully deep work on what we really want to see happen with Route 2 over time. I would just think about how those play off against each other. And, you know, I'm not necessarily saying we need to pull a plug on any one of those things, but I, I just, something about the, the magnitude of those things balanced against each other.
You know what I hear you say? Mark, I mean, when I was looking at this, I think $100,000 for the Doug White is, might be too low, actually, because of what we're talking about there. So, really what I'm hearing is that we should have more money for the, for the Route 2.
Well, I, yeah, I, I agree that with that, I'm just thinking, if the, if the outcome is to try to, you know, provide options for the replacement that somebody else is going to pay for, that's, $100,000 should buy a lot of options.
Is it options and design?
Yeah, so if I may, when we first started talking about this, this was part of last year's capital plan, the current year's capital plan. So, since then, we didn't have, well, back then, we didn't have a lot of information as far as what they had for a balance in that account. What we did know is that, you know, what we've been told is to replace a turf field is somewhere about a million dollars.
Yeah.
So, normally, what we'd be always doing in, in our line of work is, it's normally 10% is for designing and engineering. So, that's where the $100,000 came from. Now, since that time when we talked about this capital plan, we have met with the friends, and I do have a copy of what they have in the account, and we're trying to work through them paying for that design. So, this is all new. So, we, I may come back to Carrie and say, I don't need the $100,000 because we have another funding source. But at the time, we didn't have another funding source, so we weren't aware of that.
Yeah, a lot of representations were made about, about who was going to pay for that field when it, when it went in, and so, I, you know, I have some concerns about, about creating the, the perception that, that, you know, these funds are, are likely to be used for those purposes. In the meantime, I, I also recognize other needs.
Yeah, so, so how do we want to do this? Do we want to feed Carrie information, what?
I think we should put this back on the agenda.
Carrie's already asked us for information.
No, I know, but I'm saying, like, we, I can go down a list, a long list of things, but.
I think there are two things in front of us. One is, you know, we've, we already allocate, first of all, let's back up. Way back when ARPA became available, not a select board that didn't include me, I know, agreed that we would let Carrie decide how to, how to spend this money with consultation with the select board, but it was the town manager's decision, right? So, that's something we have to remember. We have already allocated the money that's in this yellow sheet, right? Now, maybe it's worthwhile to get an update to see, you know, now that we have a lot better information, should we, is there money available here, or have you changed their mind about things, where? So, maybe we should put that off on a future meeting.
Yeah.
What I would like to get tonight would be some kind of a feeling for Carrie to say, yes, we think directionally, directionally, this is where we think we should be spending the money, as opposed to you going in and saying, we think this is too much or this is too little. You know, I guess I trust that the town manager won't spend $100,000 if they don't have to, to design a, a solution for the Doug White Fields. Likewise, if they need more than 50K to do a really good, and I agree, I think we need more than 50K to do something that will maybe find it somewhere else, or this 297 that we get back from the parking. So, I think we're just giving direction or, you know, ratifying the work that the town manager has done that we asked her to do.
Well, I, I agree with you, except the only problem I'm having is, without the update of where we are, I'm having a little bit of trouble thinking how to go forward. So, if there's a way, can, do we have time to?
I guess I'm frustrated because we've been talking about this for months, and we've had this, we've, we've already done this. We had this presented to us weeks ago. We were, Carrie asked us for input, some of us gave input, some of us didn't give input. This is the result of the input. I'd like to make some, I'd like to move now. I'd like to make some movement, unless we're not ready. You're not ready.
Well, I just feel that, you know, this is dated September 6th. We just are getting this now, really, and.
But we're, but we didn't.
So, I, I guess, I'm wondering if we have time on our next agenda to spend a chunk of time, like 20 minutes, a half hour?
We've spent 20 minutes.
I know, but we haven't really gotten anywhere.
I'll think about it, I'll think about it, let's table this for now.
So, Mary, there's just one point, to your point earlier, the prior decisions, and if they're committed, why are we going back on that? Let's get a step update, but.
I don't understand that either.
Well, I, I think, I think the reason why would be if something's changed, right? Or at least I would ask questions, just for understanding, right? To say, oh, okay.
Right, but I think she, Carrie's given us the information, which is, this is what we approved before, and here's what we have left over based on all the things that changed. So, going forward, the decision that we have in front of us is how do we want to spend the money we still have available to us? That's our decision, not, not to go back and second guess what other people.
Well, let me, let me give you an example, and then I'll shut up. Like, my two problems that I'm having are strategic planning and the transportation study. And I really don't have a good understanding of, like, $25,000 was committed, but for what? What is this about? Where are we? And because we might need more money in '25 for it, but I don't understand where we are right now. And the same with TAC. It's $200,000, but I don't understand what it's for, and so I don't know how to recommend going forward.
That's a really good question, as far, but I don't think there's any more money than the 200K. I think I've heard very clear.
No, no, my question is, I thought we only had $100,000. I don't, I just, I just need to.
It's an audit of where did we spend the money?
Well, it's not, like, going to ta, we probably would have answered it by now, it's just.
Well, we tried.
I'm, I guess, I'm not exactly sure what, what question hasn't been answered. There, there was $200,000 that was allocated, $125,000 of it was for the study. The balance of that was the early funding of the transportation planner.
Oh, okay, the planner, okay, that's what it was.
So, so, yeah.
Maybe we need to table this and come back again.
Because I, so I, because I think, yeah, well, I just, I, yeah, no, I know, because I think, I mean, I think there are two buckets. So, the one is probably, you know, an important bucket, which is like, hey, here's what's recommended, right?
Past or now?
Now, here's what's being recommended tonight, like, in the, in the far two columns. Here's what's being recommended.
2.7 million, got it.
Do, do we have, you know, discussion or debate on that 2.7 million, right?
That's what we were doing tonight.
Yeah, secondly, there's also maybe, right? Hey, there's some things where it says, for instance, we said we were going to spend $150,000 on Level 3 chargers. We've spent zero. Do we, is it like, yep, we've got contracts and those are done and we're about to put them in? Or is it like, well, actually, we haven't done that, and if we wanted to use, use the money for a different purpose, or if we think the light board should do that, or if we say, hey, you know what? We put one charger in already, and it's actually not doing as well as we thought, and maybe now we want to revisit that. But I don't know that, right? So, it might be done, done, like, signed, sealed, and delivered, or it might be like, well, actually, you know what? On second thought, that's something where we could reuse the money.
Yeah, but it's.
And I don't know the answer, so there's a handful of those. There's not 20 of them, but there's a handful of those. There's not 20 of them, but there's a handful of those.
I'm just aware of it, which is the worst word. Update, whatever we are relative to what we allocate.
Right, so is that like money out the door, signed, sealed, and delivered?
I think that's a fair request.
I think there's one...
And we could put that, and I'm happy to put that on a future agenda.
I think there's one part that we could give feedback on. This additional 297 that we don't need to commit by a certain date. This is the leftover parking money.
Correct, and we can't even access it until there's a town meeting, right?
So what I think, I like this idea about putting that off or leaving it to fall to fund balance and free cash or even to use to reduce the tax rate or a stabilization fund or something like that. So I think we could give feedback, at least on that part, that that seems like the right direction, what you've got here.
Okay, that's what we'll do with that. But as far as tonight, what we were hoping to accomplish tonight, which was to look at the $2.8 million that we have available that we have to commit by December 31st. We have to spend by two years from now, right? That you've gotten input, that you've given us. You've asked for input. Here's your, what you brought back to us. Does the board feel like we are ready to say this is directionally okay with us? Or do we want to revisit?
I have two, if we're going to do that, I have two ones that I would want to just ask about. So one is the ALS Paramedic Service.
Yeah, that's right.
So, you know, in my mind, well, no, because in my mind, the grant, no, I know, but in my mind, the grant was covering the costs. And now we're saying, hey, it's another $150,000 just to get it launched. And then there's sort of ongoing costs. I know we're kind of talking about revenue, but revenue comes from the people who get the service, which means it's coming from, it's coming from the townspeople. So I just, like, that whole picture to me feels just, I got to be honest, feels like costs going up. And, okay, we're going to ask our town, fellow townspeople to pay more money in order to sort of cover it. And so it's just, like, that to me is a bit of a, like, how does that all work?
And that's a super good point, and we're going to see a presentation at FinCom in a few weeks.
Yes.
And I'd like to see that first before voting on the...
So before saying yes on another $150,000, I'm sort of like, oh.
Fair enough, and so you're going to, you're going to learn more about it.
Yep.
And you're going to be asking, you're going to be thinking about that question.
Asking those questions, yes.
Good.
So that to me would be the $150,000.
And that one, that one is an easy one to hold, certainly for another month.
Yep, and then my other question is on affordable housing. So I know we talk about affordable housing. I know, you know, people feel like it's important. I'm just throwing it out there. We're at, if this project's all go through, we're at 18% affordable housing already.
12%, 12.1.
Well, if it, if the, if the projects that are on the, if the projects that are on the table go through, we'll be at over 18?
No, 15.
Yes, like, it's almost 16 now.
It's almost 16, go ahead.
Okay, I've seen presentations that say it's 18%, but anyways. So it's just another, it's just a question, like, okay, we're funding additional over and above. Like, is that sort of what we want to spend? There's other uses of the town money, too. Like, is that where we want to spend the money on going further beyond on the affordable house?
Well, in our goals for the year, under diversity, equity, and inclusion, we specified that one of the ways we would meet that would be economic diversity around housing and workforce in particular. So that was one of our goals that we talked about. So I think that's where this aligns with that. So I agree with you that the town has met its low, low affordable hurdle, and now we're focusing more on the workforce housing. So that's where...
So is it that it's a different type of housing from the other?
Yes.
Do you know what I'm saying? Like, because the other, there's two big projects coming. Is that sort of what I'm thinking of?
This is different, okay? So the two projects that we have coming, housing is very complicated, but we, we're at the 16, but only, I mean, I wish I had Keith's slide. I wish Keith was here. Keith was here. Keith, do you remember? Keith, are you awake?
He's here.
Keith?
Yes.
When, once the Row Residences is online, and we have met our SHI, I think at a 16%, what percent of actual affordable units do we have? Do you know the...
7.2%, yes, 7.2%.
Oh, thank you.
And the reason, and the reason is, is because the subsidized housing inventory can count market rate rental units that are part of a 40B project. And that's exactly what's happening. We're adding 400 units to the count on the SHI, but only 100 units of affordable from the two 40Bs. So the answer is that when everything, when the thorough 40B gets approved and we're at 16.12%, only 7.2% of the town's year-round housing stock will be affordable, be restricted as affordable, 7.2.
Can I ask a follow-up question about that?
That's helpful additional context, thank you.
How much of that remains sort of permanently affordable? Or does some of it have an expiration date?
All of it, yeah, with the exception of maybe one or two units, all of the affordable units are deed restricted in perpetuity.
Okay, thank you.
So are you okay with that?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I just, but it is also a different type of housing, right?
It is, it absolutely is. You're exactly right. Okay, Mark, do you have any questions?
So that, and that's what I was getting at around the priorities. So my recollection of some of those discussions, and I was not on the board at the time, and so only paying attention when I was paying attention, was that a lot of the expectation was we would try to spend these monies on either direct replacement of costs that we were, that we were really incurring. And I'm satisfied that some of that was done. And also, you know, for the MUNIS implementation, that's a two-year payback on a $100,000 investment, so kind of no-brainer. The very first one, MUNIS payroll.
If we have the bandwidth to really do it.
But if you can avoid $50,000 in annual software costs, and I know how much Cornerstone and know how much we were spending on AEP.
Let's do more of these.
Yeah, do more of those because that improves our cost structure. So I have no problem with those kinds of projects. I think that, you know, on the other hand, you know, I really get concerned when, you know, representations are made that things are going to be paid for by private parties. And then a few years later down the road, they're like, well, maybe we don't have the money to do that. And so that's why I'm kind of flagging the field, not to mention the, you know, the substantial new information that all of us have now about exactly what PFAS is and how much of it is involved in these artificial turf fields. And so there's real concerns, some of which were expressed at the time. You know, the, so if we were talking about, so I don't, I don't dispute the fact that an alternatives analysis needs to be done. And then when we, you know, back up and say, and, you know, Terry, you're on this, that we do need to get a lot more serious about how transportation is handled in this community. And I think that the relatively low dollars that we're pushing in the direction of the Route Two study seem like they're not enough ammunition to really, you know, put on that target.
So what I would say about the $50,000 for the Route Two study, since it's come up multiple times, is that was the request from staff.
Yeah.
So, and Steve Dukran or Alan Cathcart are here. They could speak to that if you are interested. If not, we could put in...
Yeah, I'd be interested in hearing how DBW does it because recognizing that this is a DPLM, and not that there's ever any gaps between departments, but let's hear it.
This, I listed all the transportation, the planning as part of DPLM, but this request came in from Public Works.
Carrie, it's Alan Cathcart, if you'd like me to speak.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, part of the issues are that we're trying to dovetail existing efforts. For instance, StanTech, as Terry mentioned, is, has been hired to do work on transportation. Connectivity is a big part of that. Obviously, Route Two is a big hurdle for the town, has been historically. And whereas the Mast Dot is only recently identified, sort of the end of their early, you know, preliminary design concepts for Route Two, we thought it would be advantageous to use the same transportation consultant we have, use their engineers to sort of drill into it and give us guidance to make sure that we can really understand the implications and get our voice heard at Mast Dot. So it's very time-sensitive. And it's because we have a consultant on board, and it is, in essence, a part of the connectivity issues and challenges Concord had. That's why it's, you know, only, you know, $50,000. But it's just a piece of a puzzle that's going to take many, many years. The issue when it comes to some of these other issues, Doug White Field, if we don't deal with the challenge of what are we going to replace it with sooner rather than later, we will not have a field. The closure of that field will have major implications for the school and various recreation activities and sporting associations. Without Doug White Field, there's a ripple effect, so it's time-sensitive. So we're trying to get as much as we can ahead of the issue. And the whole idea of alternatives is going to require a lot of public vetting. We've heard that, and we need to acknowledge that. So that's why we're looking at that money. But most of the requests that are DPLM and Public Works, I can say, are based on time sensitivity and trying to marry things that are already happening. And really, the whole idea is if we don't have the fuel to do some of this preliminary work, the delay is significant. It's not just a couple of months. It can be another year or two, depending on, you know. So the whole idea of, the asks are sort of based on the fact that they don't all have equal value. The Doug White Field will lead into a private investment, we see. The Route Two A Corridor is going to be an ongoing discussion, but we need money early to start influencing that. And I hope that's helpful. But I think the issue of deferring things is really sort of getting into the management of projects. And, you know, we're, we're trying to move things along. And, you know, Steve Dukran is available if anyone has specific questions. But I just want to say, we are trying to work with the town manager. She's hearing asks from across the departments and trying to be consistent with the goals of the select board as well. But there are a lot of moving pieces. We understand it. We know the culvert on Baker Ave. We have to be conservative. If it's $900,000, that'll be $100,000 available, which is great. But for, you know, we literally have a real problem without any source of funding to deal with a major failure of a culvert. We've been here before, and this ARPA is an opportunity to sort of address it, at least before we get an enterprise standing. So hopefully, that's helpful, and I will certainly answer any specific questions if I can. For Steve Dukran.
No, I think so.
Yeah, can I add, I think, a question about the Route Two evaluation, the cost of it? When we put this request initially, that was actually my number, $50,000. But as I, we talked to StanTech, and they looked closer and closer, they actually are asking for more money, more in the order of $85,000. If we could fund that amount, they can do the study, you know, better. Give us information. We really need to deal with it, with Mast Dot. But that's the lower number that went in when we put this request. It was kind of like an educated guess of mine, as Carrie said, but to do it properly, we'll probably need some more money.
Okay, thank you, Steve. So instead of looking at this as, you know, very, very solid budget figures for how much it would cost to do each of these, are we in general agreement that these are the types of activities we would want funded?
Well, I think we're in agreement on some of them. Whereas like the ALS, we might want to wait for the FinCom, right? And the Doug White Field, I do agree with Mark. I've heard a lot at town meeting where people are very iffy about this whole thing. And also, it's supposed to be privately funded. So I'm not sure I'm in favor of that one, but there are other ones.
When you say iffy, what do you mean?
The town meeting, well, we've seen moratorium...
Right, right, so they want the Doug White Fields taken up, right?
Well, it's not clear, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure.
Isn't the design, isn't the design to make the best possible solution for the town, considering PFAS and trying to figure out what the right design should be for the community?
Well, I think it's going to, I think it's going to be taking a lot of time politically to get consensus, and I also think, I agree with Mark. We were promised private dollars on this, so...
They need to implement it, but don't we want to control the design of what it is that's going to be built?
Yeah, I think this money is to figure out what we want to do there. What are our options? What are the costs of those options? Get public feedback and figure out what to do. What we actually do should be funded by the public-private partnership. But we need to get going because there are people saying, very upset about the fact that we have this PFAS on... Right, people are upset, yeah. And the fields are failing. So I think this money, this is really just, let's get seed money to get going on this.
So we don't have to do the full engineering, right?
Right, right.
So maybe we can do it for less than 100, but we should do something to say, what are the options?
Again, I'm back to, you know, in general, do we think that these activities are right? Pulling out the ALS until we learn more from the presentation by Chief Judge. And are we okay with these activities now that...
I'm good with the rest of them.
Yeah, are you, you're good with the rest of them?
Mary, I'm in support and would even support if Pete Dukin is saying that we need more money for Route Two, that if we have some balance and reserves and we want to use it, I'm in support of that as well.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, okay, what about you, Mark?
Yeah, I think that in particular, the Rotary intersection needs its own study, you know, with a focus on local access and how we, as a community, you know, what we would like to see there that could influence how the Department of Transportation plans that. So I think we need to spend more on that.
Okay, yep.
So what, what would you like to see next? I'm hoping, I'm hearing there's agreement on 10 of 12 or 9 of 12.
A period 11 of 12.
Yeah, I would, my expectation is that the ALS one makes sense as well. You know, to, to the point about the revenue for that, you know, insurance companies end up paying for most of that because people pay for transportation.
That's what we want to talk about at FinCom.
Yeah, I want to see the whole thing. I want to see the whole package.
It's fair to take it out.
Right, it's fair to look at it. So I'm pretty comfortable with that one, just, you know, and, and, you know, I understand the expectations of the rest of them.
Okay, so you're, you're comfortable with 11 of 12 holding the ALS with additional consideration for additional funding for the Route Two Corridor study?
Yeah, right. Yep, and then on the other ones, would love to see what's truly, you know, contracted and committed versus is there any, you know, stuff that's out there.
What are you thinking, November, December timeframe?
Sooner if it's ready.
Well, it's not.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to get to a point where we can just give you a quarterly update because everything is allocated and...
That would be great.
And then we should, yeah, but at some point, or in that next one, we should decide if there is leftover money, like 297 for the parking meters or maybe some other ones that have some leftover. What would we want to do with it, right? Do we want to just pave the roads and, you know, are there other options, right? But I mean, there's just, you know, I mean, there's, there's options. Like, what could you do with the money?
First update, end of October. Hold that, end of October, first update.
Great.
Quarter after that. Very good, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, that was long, but we got to a good point.
How do we feel about talking about goals at this point?
How do we feel about talking about goals at this point?
Well, I mean, again, this is something you just got over the weekend. I just wanted you to have it.
I have some comments.
Okay.
I do, too.
Okay, good, all right. I'm happy to do that.
Okay, these are the things I really liked about it. I really like the fact that you're focusing on the organization, making it resilient, succession planning. I really like the fact that you're looking at some concrete things to do about DEI. I really like the fact that you're focusing on communication with the townspeople. And Carrie and I, you and I have talked about this a lot, how to communicate better to the town, the value of the services they're getting.
Yeah. Do you want to...
What's missing for me is...
At least Cameron doesn't have his, because of the computer.
He does.
I do, and I, well, no, I mean, I've gone through it, but I'll take another copy, but yes.
All right.
I would like to see more focus on a strategic facilities plan.
Right. My suggestion on that would be to put strategic planning at the top of the page because I know every time I go through this, like, when we're doing your eval and whatever, by the time you get to the bottom, you're like, whoa. So if you put it at the top, it's, instead of the bottom, the strategic planning, and it says, this is my top priority for the year. And it's, you know, I would like to see that. And also to see something about, something we've discussed, aligning the... And also to see something about, something we've discussed, aligning the town manager goals with the select board goals, and the select board goals with the other committees. We've talked about, you know, how to time that next spring, and that's our job, too. It's not just your job, but you could lead us in that. But I, I liked this. There's fewer goals than last year, so maybe it's more manageable.
I like that about it, too. Cameron, what do you want to say?
Yeah, so, listen, I think it's a great start. You know, I, I think there's a good list here to, to start to work from, right? I, just in the interest of sort of balance, maybe, there's, we've got five things on DEI. We've got one thing on finance. So just, you know, to me, I would love to see something else, and I don't know exactly what it is, but I'll give you some, some ideas, right? Something else around, you know, financial discipline, cost savings opportunities, revenue generation, you know, how do we deal with the rec funds? How do we deal with our low free cash balance? Just something in there about, you know, what, what we're going to do. It's great, we're AAA, but, you know, what are we going to do to keep our house in order and, and, you know, address sort of any efficiencies we can find, or something there around that, that kind of finance piece, right? So I would love to see something else on that.
You know what? If I could just say, I agree with that, and, and also, we just said, let's have a quarterly update on ARPA. So that's an easy one to...
ARPA could be another one that's sort of in there, right?
Put in there, quarterly update on ARPA.
If, if I could just respond to that, because if, if I had my way, all of the goals would be financial. The reason, the reason I did not put more under finance is because you have a lot on your list for, in select board goals, for, for finance, a lot of those things, and I didn't want to duplicate the work that would be, we would be doing.
My, my personal take is I'd love to see one thing, one more thing, that's something around this, you know, here's what we're going to do to drive revenue and manage expenses, like, just, but just something, something that's what...
With something that's...
Yeah, I think duplication is okay. It means we're coordinating our goals together. It's good.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a couple, well, a couple other things. So items eight, 10, and 15, while I don't have a problem with them, I just find them, at least as written, as a little bit sort of, I kind of feel like that's sort of your job, and I'm not sure that, to me, they aren't sort of column-out types of goals, right? And, and maybe sometimes even hard to measure, right? So it's not that I'm against them, it's just, to me, I sort of think of these things as like, what are key sort of big, big things we're going to do? And those felt a little more like, hey, that's my, that's my day job kind of thing. Item 17, I like it. I'd love to make sure we're including sort of trade-offs and scenarios. So just, you know, language-wise, I think it would be great to make sure that we're including something around that. And then finally, did we want, do you want anything about the light plant in here? I mean, because it is something that you oversee, new director coming in, or you're needing to replace. I mean, that, to me, just feels like a, you know, an important transition.
Yeah. And, and we also have talked about the governance issue at the light plant.
Yes. So just maybe give thought to something around that that you might want to, want to consider including. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
I'm good.
So, Carrie, Wendy, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I had just a couple. One was actually, was what you just spoke about, the governance, because I know there's around the light plant, because that's in organizational resilience, or maybe there is a good place for that. And then just a couple quick points. You, you mentioned your executive committee attendance at all committees, and I just challenge you to say, is that realistic? Because there's a lot of committees, I wouldn't expect...
Right. I had the same question. Yep.
And on strategic planning, I really like that you're focusing on that, and I just don't know if we need to be more specific on which key planning documents you're talking about. And I don't know if that also gets into the sort of making status on these key planning documents available to the public. I know that's a, it's a big challenge and may require software, but just some thoughts about how we can better inform the public about our strategic plans and status. And then the only other thing I was thinking about, because of the ambulance service and that big transition, is that something that should be included under your goals as well? Where, I'm not sure. But just a thought.
Okay. Terry, did you give your feedback?
Pretty much I did. I, I agree with what Wendy just said about number 16. I'm not sure that it's realistic to...
It says twice per year.
Okay, but...
Yeah.
Does, it says assign, and, okay, including liaison to all boards and committees? You're going to assign a staff person to every board and committee? How many don't have staff liaisons now? I mean, is that realistic?
And some don't need four times a year.
Right. Right. So some questions on that. And the other one was in number 10, support DEI commission. Is that, that you yourself, or is there a senior staff person that can do this? Somebody like Jess, you know, or somebody?
Currently, there is a staff member in the town manager's office that supports the DEI commission.
Okay, good.
So we've had, we've had a discussion over the last two fiscal years, and I assume it will come up again, about whether or not we have a dedicated staff person or not for, for...
But why is this a big goal next year again? Just because people ask about it?
Well, because it's a commitment that's been made in prior years and hasn't, hasn't yet come to fruition.
Well, Carrie just said we have a dedicated staff person.
We, we have a...
There's a, there's a staff liaison.
Yes.
Right.
But that's, so that, that's not the same as a, as a leader.
There, there has been an ongoing request for a DEI manager, director...
Right, but that's not what this says.
Right.
I, I'm just unclear whether we need number 10, because it's not...